Good evening, everybody. Welcome. Bonjour. Quay. I just would like to acknowledge that we are, we can pay our respects to our Mi'kmaq people, the Abokets. Here we are on the great space of Mi'kmaq. And I hope we all have come tonight in peace and friendship. So before we get started, I do have just a few kind of housekeeping issues that I would love to just share with you all. And so before we call the meeting to order, I would like to take a moment to review the purpose of this planning board meeting and the process for the applications that are being heard tonight. So under the Planning Act of PEI and the City of Charlottetown zoning and development bylaw, the planning board has several powers and duties, including investigating and surveying the physical, social, and economic conditions in relation to development within the municipality, and also making recommendations to council for planning decisions. The planning board focuses on land use and associated impacts of proposed applications only, not the physiological, God, it's been a long day, values or merits of a service being provided as part of the land use. They do so through applicable legislation. So in other words, if an application is being heard for the commercial or retail land use, such as, say, a large grocery store, the planning board could not consider what kind of food the store carries if the food is of value to the community. So that's just a silly, simple example of kind of what the role is of here as planning board. Instead, the board would consider the nuisance impacts of the use, such as increased traffic, truck delivery noise, and whatever else that might include. They may also consider factors such as parking, walkability, lack of transit to the store, or the need for a special waste pickup. This evening's applications directly involve Charlottetown and some of our most vulnerable residents and the landlords surrounding, where the land use are proposed to be located. The planning board's role is to hear the City of Charlottetown staff recommendations, consider and debate the applications, and ultimately make a recommendation to council on whether to approve, deny, or defer. As the planning board chair, I must ensure that the City of Charlottetown's procedural bylaw is followed during this meeting. So given how controversial these two applications before us are as the chair and empowered by Section 118 of the Municipalities Government Act and Section 3 and 37 of the Charlottetown's procedural bylaw, I'm giving the public permission to address the board. It should be noted that while this is legislatively permitted, it is not and will not be the city's regular practice for planning board meetings. The protocol and speaker order for each proposed application on the agenda will be presented from the city planning staff and then presentation from the applicant, followed by the public will speak to the impacts of the proposed applications. After that, the board will ask questions and debate, and followed by that, the board makes the decision to recommend to council that the application be approved, denied, or deferred. So I have a speakers list for this evening, and most people have pre-registered. Now, if anyone hasn't pre-registered, once everyone is done speaking, I will give out a last-minute, you know, call-out for if anyone else does want to share something and just somehow missed out on pre-registering to speak. The opportunity to add your name to the speakers list had initially closed at the 15-minute mark, but I understand there was some confusion coming in from downstairs. So like I say, if time permits, if somebody hasn't registered, we certainly won't see you not have your opportunity to speak. Okay, so in addressing the board, the speakers will have the opportunity to identify impacts related to the application. As this is not a public hearing, once an impact has been raised, then we will make a note of that, and really, other speakers with similar impacts may want to find other impacts to discuss versus the ones that we have already heard. For example, for the overdose prevention site application, if the impact of used needles is raised quite a few times, you're probably better off addressing other impacts so that we can add more impacts to the list versus just the same ones over and over again. Thank you for that, by the way. So in accordance with the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act, any member of the public who chooses to speak this evening is given permission to the city to broadcast them live through our YouTube and record them as part of our planning board meeting proceedings. Tonight's meeting is part of the public record. I also want to note that there is a public code of conduct for planning board meetings in the city's procedural bylaw. And all persons in the public gallery, I ask if we all respect those. And those things would be like, let's refrain from addressing the planning board unless they are permitted to, so by the chair, through me, and through the speakers list. Maintain quiet and order. Not everyone's going to have the same views, so we need to respect the folks that have bravely come here to speak. Refrain from disturbing the proceedings by words or gestures or actions or applauding, displaying flags or placards or similar activity. Refrain from talking on electronic mobile devices. If you do have to take a call and it's an emergency, please just leave the space. Ensure that your electronic devices are on silent so that they don't interfere in with the meeting. And in the case of an emergency, there are two exit points for attendance to use. There's one here, one over here. Yeah. You can also use the stairs to City Hall's main entrance on Queen Street or use the south stairs onto Kent Street. Please avoid using the elevator and inform a staff member if assistance is needed. I want to thank you all in advance for respecting the planning board and the process that we adhere to and the city's procedural bylaw and our code of conduct. And just before I call the meeting to order, I do want to just let you all know too that there's been a few news feeds that have been circulating today that have indicated that what we are embarking on this evening has already been approved and is going forward. I can assure you that this is a planning board meeting and there has been nothing approved to this point. So whatever news feed was reporting, they are incorrect. So I just wanted to let everybody know that. So with that, I will now call the planning board meeting to order. Do we have any declarations of conflicts? Yes, Basil? Okay. So you will exit at the time? Okay? You're gonna leave now? Because you're in the yours. Okay. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Can I have an approval of the agenda for this evening? And before I get an approval, I have been asked by the applicants if we can hear 15 Park Street on the respect to the major variance application from the PEI Housing, allowing a one-year extension to go first, and then the variance application from the PEI Department of Health to go second. So does the board accept that change in the agenda? Moved by Counselor Beck, seconded by Bobby. All those in favor? Okay. Very well. And so, okay. And an adoption of the minutes from Tuesday, August the 8th? Okay. Moved by Jackie, seconded by Sin. All those in favor? Okay, all those in favor. Any business arising from those minutes from August the 8th? Okay, seeing none, we can move on to our reports. And we are starting with number two. 15 Park Street. Laurel Palmer Thompson, Planner 3, will be presenting this application. So I will turn that over to you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of planning board, ladies and gentlemen of the public. The City of Charlestown Planning and Heritage Department has received a request for an application to extend a variance for temporary use to the property located at 15 Park Street, PID number 365593 on the corner of Park Street and Riverside Drive. You can see the property located and bounded in red. We did, and we thought it was. Is there a way to turn it up? Hey, the property in question is located in the Comprehensive Development Area Zone. If you can see the zone color right here. And the property owner, PEI Housing Corporation, has requested a one-year extension and has again applied for temporary variance use that is much the same as the one that was approved by council on October 13th of 2022. The application is to allow two modular housing complexes, each containing 25 units, to remain on the property for a period of one year. The modular housing complexes were placed to provide temporary secure housing for homeless individuals that were living in encampments throughout the city. This application is being made under Section 3.91F Major Variants of the Zoning and Development Bylaw, which allows major variance applications for temporary use or structure in a manner otherwise prohibited by this bylaw for a period lasting no longer than one year. Planning board must consider the request and make a recommendation to council, and council may approve or reject the request. So property context. The subject property is approximately 6.4 acres in size. You can see it right there. Is currently occupied by the former government garage, maintenance garage, and office space. Here's an aerial view of the property. It was also recently used as a COVID-19 testing site. Contains a surface parking lot and two modular structures containing 50 temporary emergency transitional housing units. On October 13th, 2022, city council granted a temporary use, major variance approval for these emergency housing units to operate on the property for a period of one year. Government of PEI staff have indicated that an environmental impact assessment of the property is currently underway and is scheduled to be completed in November of this year. The purpose of this report is to identify the effects of the former maintenance garage open storage uses on the property. The government has indicated that once the report is complete, they will begin in a position to propose permanent uses and buildings on the property in accordance with the Eastern Gateway Master Plan. So surrounding context. I'll just flip back to the zoning map, if you can see it. Adjacent properties are occupied by a mix of land uses, including to the north, 15 Riverside Drive and Co. Limited Manufacturing Facility. To the east, I'll just kind of give you an idea, to the east, Riverside Drive Irving Oil Limited Storage Facility and Service Station. To the south, down here, 385 Grafton Street, Tim Horton's and Wendy's Eating and Drinking Establishments. To the southwest and west, right here and here. Government of PEI undeveloped green space, PID numbers 825927 and 336537. To the west, City of Charlestown Surface Parking Lot, PID number 365585 and Atlantic Lottery Corporation Facility and low-density residential dwelling units further west along Beach and Park Streets. The Comprehensive Development Area Zone and classification applies to adjacent properties to the northwest, northeast, and south. Parking/Park Culture applies to adjacent properties to the west and southwest, which separates the subject property from land-sown low-density residential or to further west. So legislative requirements. In accordance with Section 3.9 Major Variances of the Zoning and Development Bylaw, on August 24th, 2023, notice was sent to 13 property owners located within 100 meters of the subject property. The notice advised them of the major variance requests by the government for a one-year temporary use. And the deadline to submit responses to the city's letter was September 8th, 2023. So in response to the notification letter, 10 letters of opposition were received, three letters that were neutral, and 19 letters of support were received prior to the 12 noon deadline on Friday, September 8th, 2023. Comments in the letters were related to both the overdose prevention site and the temporary shelter requests. They did not send separate letters for each use. I've included in the report a summary of the comments received in the response letters. And you will note that in the red text, in the comment summary, it denotes comments specific to the emergency housing. Additional letters were also received after 12 noon deadline, which included one letter of opposition, three neutral letters, and six letters of support. And they are also included in the report. So if you refer to your report, you can see a general summary of it. And then the actual letters are attached to the report as well. So there's currently two one-story garage maintenance buildings on the property that are scheduled to be demolished. Also located on the north portion of the site is a former COVID testing clinic. The two modular complexes that are subject to the variance request, let's go back to this one, for a temporary shelter are on the southern portion of the property. The Department of Health and Wellness also currently has a request for a temporary variance to allow an overdose prevention site. And the province has made it clear that these applications are both separate from one another, and they will both operate as distinctive services. In terms of location, with exception to the West End of Beach and Park Street, which is an established residential neighborhood, this area of the city tends to be industrial in nature and contains uses such as the school board, government garage, parking lots, government office buildings, Irving Oil tanks, and the Charlestown sewage treatment plant is located along Riverside Drive. North of the site is the Charlestown Driving Park. And also to the southwest of the site is land owned by the city zoned institutional, which is used to hold events. So just to note, this area of the city, it falls within Area 2. Character areas 3 and 4 of the Eastern Gateway Master Plan. And this is the Eastern Gateway Master Plan. This is the property which is deemed as Area 2. Character areas 3 and 4. So the Eastern Gateway Master Plan was drafted in March of 2011. And as the document states, the master plan is intended to help better understand the role of the gateway in the city and guide new opportunities for growth and development. Character areas 3 and 4 of the Eastern Gateway Master Plan designate these uses, these areas as a site for a multi-use sport and entertainment complex. MUSEC, so I'll refer to it as that later on. The plan recommends for both parks and beach streets to form a crescent and access to Riverside Drive to be cut off from Park Street. A new road would be constructed to the north side of the provincial lands, which would provide access to the DP Murphy property. The long-term vision for the plan incorporates DP Murphy's land as an area for higher-order commercial and office uses that would also support the MUSEC facility. Given the direction of both the Eastern Gateway Master Plan and the official plan for the property, any long-term change of use on the property would require an amendment to the Eastern Gateway Master Plan and to the official plan as well. There's also, and also in addition to approval of a development concept plan would be required for the property because the property is zoned CDA. So there's three levels of plans that would have to be, two levels of plans that would have to be amended, and then a concept plan approved for the property for long-term use. So to provide some background on the request, in October of 2022, PEI Housing Corporation located structures on the site following an approval by council of a temporary structure. Work was then performed to provide water and sewer services to the site. PEI Housing Corporation indicated in their application last year that the dwellings will allow for temporary placement of people until they can be placed in a more permanent residence or reestablished into society after receiving government-provided services and support. The emergency shelter will provide the following, as outlined in their application, operated by the Department of Social Development and Housing, PEI Housing Corporation. Complex will include two facilities. Each facility has 25 beds. Accommodations include shared living, sleeping space, communal washrooms, shower and laundry facilities. Staff, support staff and security will be on-site during operational hours. Perimeter fencing will be placed for security and privacy. And modular units are designed for extreme temperatures to provide safe and warm accommodations during the winter months. So from a planning perspective, with the growing cost of affordable housing, there's been a sharp increase in homelessness within the city. And it's been difficult for many vulnerable individuals to access safe, affordable housing. Some stats on the housing and PEI are as follows. PEI government's monthly inflation index showed an 8.3 inflation rate on PEI in August of 2022, which is the highest year-over-year increase compared to all other Canadian provinces. IRAC recently set a maximum allowable rent increase that was effective on January 1st, 2023, to 10.8% for rental units heated with furnace oil. A cap of 3% on allowable rent increases after December 31st, 2023 is now in effect. The MLS House Home Price Index tracks price trends far more accurately than is possible using average or median price measures. The overall MLS HBI composite single-family benchmark price was $367,400 in August of 2023. And that's unchanged compared to August of 2022. According to the PEI Real Estate Association, the MLS Home Price Index composite single-family benchmark price was $372,700 in August of 2022, advancing 17% compared to August of 2021. And the CMHC vacancy rate for the primary rental on PEI in the fourth quarter of October of 2021 was 1.8%. So there are many policies within the official plan, such as housing needs in variety that support the provision of safer housing for vulnerable populations. They're included in your report for your review. And during the review of the application, planning staff also consulted with city departments to seek input. So comments from the department. Police requested funding for four additional officers to monitor the neighborhood for one year, with assurance from the province that the cost of hiring additional officers would be covered. Fire required that both the OPS and the temporary shelter have sprinkler systems installed in accordance with NFPA 1 prior to a permit being issued. And that's the fire department's national fire code. So Public Works required then a new public multi-use pathway, fencing and associated lighting be constructed across PID numbers 336537 and 825927 to ensure a direct and safe pedestrian connection between Kent Street and Fitzroy Street intersection and the subject property. They also requested that the main entrance to the facility be relocated to the satisfaction of the manager of the city's Public Works Department. This area of the city, it was not zoned to accommodate permanent housing. And typically, long-term residential housing would not have been located within such an, like, an area that's deemed for industrial use. And these type of modular dwellings would typically be used in work camps and industrial or commercial uses. Therefore, the modular dwellings, they do not present as out-of-character for the location. It's recognized that the subject property is located on the periphery of a low-density residential neighborhood. And concerns were raised by residents of this neighborhood at the public consultation meeting held by the province and through responses received from the city's notification letter sent on August 24th of this year. Through GIS mapping, staff determined an area of influence around the boundary of the subject property based on the 20-minute walking radius. And I showed you this earlier. This area, you can see, is all outlined in blue. So this is the area of influence encompasses. As a mitigative measure to address concerns raised by residents, the four police officers that have been requested by the city's chief of police are to patrol and monitor this geographic area. And these officers are to be employed for a period of one year from the date of issuance of a building and development permit if the application is approved at council. Staff are also recommending that the province funds and operates daily garbage and safe disposal cleanup services within the public right-of-way throughout the area of influence. And notwithstanding, the area of influence does contain many other amenities that would be beneficial as support services to people that would frequent the temporary shelter. The area is close to shelters, other shelters, transition facilities, and medical services. It's within a safe walking distance for clients to these services. Staff would note that the site has accommodated other temporary uses, such as the COVID testing facility during the pandemic. And as previously stated, the Eastern Gateway Master Plan designates a future use for this property as a location for a multi-use events facility. If the variance is approved for one year, it will not compromise the long-term intent for the future use of the property. However, it's staff recommendation that no extensions be given to this variance application should approval be granted. An extension past one year cannot be contemplated. It requires extensive public consultation with major amendments to the official plan, the Eastern Gateway Plan and the Master Plan, and approval of a development concept plan. So all of these planning documents would require extensive public consultation. They require concept plan approval, stakeholder engagement within the community. It wouldn't just be a matter of the applicant coming in with a plan for the site and then applying for a public meeting. Stakeholder engagement has to occur. That's very important. So staff are prepared to support the application for one additional year, given the site is already operational and the infrastructure is in place to service the facility. Section 3.91F of the Zoning and Development Bylaw does state for the allowance of a temporary variance for a period of one year. So a temporary use or structure in a manner otherwise prohibited by this bylaw for a period lasting no longer than one year. So there is a clause in the bylaw that states that temporary use isn't to be extended past one year. But I would note that this is a new application. Normally, we wouldn't look to address an application past a year. But given there's extenuating circumstances within the immediate need, and there's an immediate need to continue to provide housing during the colder months to this vulnerable population, staff do deem this as a reasonable request. Moreover, the property use is temporary in nature, and it will give the city, in conjunction with the province and other community stakeholders, an opportunity to, over the next year, to establish a long-term, sustainable plan to address housing options to serve the needs of vulnerable people living in the city. So the recommendation from the Planning and Heritage Department is to encourage Planning Board to recommend to council for the approval of the temporary use variance to accommodate a housing facility consisting of two modular complexes, each containing 25 units for a period not to exceed one year, subject to the recommendations of police, fire, and public works departments, and subject to the operational specifications submitted by the PEI Housing Corporation in their application submission. And if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them, and I also believe the applicant is online, willing to answer some questions. I'm sure there will be some.
Thank you, Laurel. If, if Jason's on the line, Jason, do you want to give your presentation first? That way, the folks will be, hear from you both before they start asking their questions.
Sure, Chair, that's no problem. Is it possible to share my screen for a presentation, or I'm just not sure how it's working at the location?
Yes, you can share your screen, Jason.
Okay.
So everyone, this is Jason Doyle, and he is with the Department of Housing from the provincial government.
Just one second. Are you able to see my presentation?
Yes, we see it.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, thank you Planning Board and Chair for having us here tonight. Myself, Jason Doyle, the Director of Housing with the PEI Housing Corporation, and my colleague, Anne Drake, is here to assist with any questions that may come. I'll run through a quick presentation, presentation that we put together. So as mentioned, we, we created the Park Street Emergency Shelter Service in December of 2022 to create a warm, dry, safe place for individuals most in need to sleep. It's an overnight emergency shelter, operating from 8:00 PM to 8:00 AM every day, 24/7. We have a low-barrier approach with a safety focus for clients and staff. As Laurel mentioned, we have two modular complexes. Each has 11 rooms with two beds, and there's two rooms with one bed and one room with an accessible, accessible bed in the complexes. The service that we provide serves a wide range of population groups, male identifying clients, female identifying clients, non-gender identifying. We, we have the ability to serve couples. We have individuals that are, we're able to take pets as well in the facility, and it's geared towards, or it's for individuals that are over 18 years of age. I had mentioned earlier, we operated on 8:00 PM to 8:00 AM basis, so an overnight emergency shelter, and it operates seven days per week. Just quickly, with regards to the services on the site of the shelter, we have access to case management and referral services. So our, our staff are trained in case management, and they often refer clients to different, different nonprofit organizations that provide service to this, to the target population group. We have, in, within the facilities, we have access to laundry facilities. We have storage for, safe storage of belongings for the clients, and we offer a transportation service that leaves in, around 8:00 AM each morning and travels to various locations within the, within the city. Our model of service for Park Street Shelter is, there's a 30-night bed booking model, so individuals can stay there for, for up to 30 nights and also have the ability to extend beyond that as well. This chart provides a, a little bit of background on the utilization of Park Street Emergency Shelter since its inception in December of 2022. As you can see, our average, average number of clients served on a nightly basis is approximately, based on most recent data from August, is 42 individuals per night. We have 85% utilization rate of, of the beds during the month of August, and it's been relatively consistent since we, since we began. In terms of unique clients that utilize the service, we have, in the month of August, we had 97 unique individuals utilizing the shelter service. Just a snapshot of where we were in August 2023 in terms of the clients that were served. We had 68 male identifying clients, 25 female identifying clients, and five non-gender-based clients. We had, as I mentioned, 97 unique clients for an average occupancy of 85%. We were able to serve three, three pets, eight couples, and there were no individuals that required accessible units. Providing a bit of a breakdown based on the community of the individual. In Prince County, we, in the month of August, there was 20 individuals served at Park Street Shelter. In Queen's County, there was 46. In Kings County, there was 14, and 14 people that were outside of PEI but within Canada, and one individual that was outside of Canada. Just some of the observations that we have learned over the last, almost a year of operating. We've, we've really focused our attention on working collaboratively with our, with our partners and the public. We have very strong relationships with a lot of the nonprofit organizations that provide support and service to, to this group. We have an agreement with the, the police services that provides additional security for the site in terms of e-watch cameras and also through additional, additional staffing. As I mentioned previously, we have, as part of our approval, previously, we offered a transportation service that operates in the morning and delivers or travels throughout the city of Cheryl Town at various locations for the clients. This facility is a part of our data collection system referred to as hyphes. So we're gaining lots of statistical information regarding, regarding the homeless population, and we're able to utilize that to make better decisions going forward. And also, with regards to our modular complexes, there are, there are facilities within the complexes and within the administration building that will, that provide storage for the belongings of the clients, so that's a big factor as well. With regards to our, our approval, in, in October of 2022, we, we had a one-year variance granted based on several conditions. One was operated by Housing Land and Communities, formerly referred to as Social Development and Housing. We had two modular complexes with 25 beds each, operating from 8:00 PM to 8:00 AM, seven days per week. We do have security on-site 24 hours a day to provide additional, additional secure environment for the community. We, we did place fencing around the perimeter of the property, both for security and privacy reasons. We have a shuttle service, as I mentioned, that accesses various points within the city in the morning. And we have provided contact information for our operations manager to, to the public to provide, and avenue to provide any concerns or complaints regarding the service that's being offered. And I believe, yeah, that is it, and I'd open it up to any questions.
Thank you, Jason. I just wanted to make one clarification when you had your conditions to which you were approved. At no point did the city of Cheryl Town dictate your hours of operation. Those were your hours of operation, not the city of Cheryl Town. So I just wanted to make that crystal clear, that, like I say, those were your hours, not the city of Cheryl Town's. So thank you for that. So I think the next thing we'll do is open it up to those folks that have registered for, for questions on this file. And I believe the first person on the list is Boyd Pearden. Is he here? There you are. Come on up. And we're going to time you for about five minutes. Does that work for you?
I'll be sure of that.
Okay, thank you.
First, I have a question for this lady here. When the original application...
If you just want to, just to keep it proper, Robert rules of order, direct your questions to me, and then I can kind of facilitate them out to the best person to answer. Thank you.
When the original application went out last year, notices went out to residents within 100 meters? Okay. That resulted in about two residents getting a letter because we have a huge parking lot between us and the center. So we weren't duly informed. So I'd just like to bring that up. Okay. The way this facility is run, people arrive at 8 o'clock in the evening to register, and they are allowed to wander about till 3:00 or 4:00 in the morning. This has resulted in people wandering in people's yards, causing break-ins, thefts, noise complaints, and a general feeling of unrest among residents. I have had people try to break into my car and my shed. I have lived in the area for over 45 years, and it was a very safe area, but not anymore. The way the province pressured the city to allow this site was not right. There has to be a better way to help these people, but what, but what is happening here is not it. The shelter needs to close, or the way is run changed. Thank you. Please reject this application.
Thank you, thank you, Board. And just in terms of impact to the community, I've just made note of the increase in the trespassing and break-ins. Does that sound good and clear for you? Increase in break-ins and trespassing?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, our next person on the list is Vaughn Davies.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'd like to thank the committee for allowing me to have a couple minutes here tonight. I'm Vaughn Davies, and my wife and I are tax-paying residents, and we reside on Escher Street. And we're in the area of influence. I just discovered that tonight. We're opposed to any variance extension whatsoever for this two-modular unit and transitional housing. This variance for another year, that's just a bunch of nonsense. It's anything but traditional. It's just kicking the can down the road, and another year, we're going to be back here again for another variance. Temporary to me means temporary. Now, we're not without compassion, but where is the long-term plan? Who is working on it? I've never heard of anything being worked on. Residents currently residing in the area seen theft, needles, drug use, general increase in crime. The city's own stats reflect this, just the latest, the council meeting on Monday night in the package. Folks don't feel safe in their homes, the ones I've talked to, and all this really comes down, we feel, to drug use and drug dealing. And there's no place for that in a residential area, head area, next to a residential area or around it, or in the area of influence. So tonight, we feel, my wife and I, the city's at a crossroads. The drug dealer and crime take over, or support the taxpaying resident in their quest for safety, relaxation, and value in their homes. We've had enough, and really, whatever it is, wouldn't be enough tonight for what we've seen. No to the variance, and thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Vaughn. And we had another speaker on the list for this file, Sarah Fuller. Is she here, or they? Well, they did pre-register, so perhaps they're not here. So before we move on to the discussions with the board, are there any other folks that didn't register that may want to speak before we move on to the Planning Board? Oh. Okay, so I'm going to open the floor out now to our Planning Board. Any questions from you folks? Go ahead, Counselor McCabe.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So more clarification to start. Laurel, you had said the extenuating circumstances allows us to reconsider this application, even though under our 3.9.1 subsection F says they are only permitted for a one-year variance, no more than one year. But we're saying, because this is an extenuating circumstance, we're going to allow, we're going to consider this application. But is that not contravening what our bylaw reads? Just help me understand that.
So through the chair, you are right in one sense, but technically, they did apply for a new application. They, it is an extension of the, the temporary use on the site, past the one year, which does concern staff, but, and normally, under normal circumstances, unless it was an extenuating circumstance, I would not recommend it, given that this is a situation, and I totally understand the residents' concerns, but we're also dealing with a population that is vulnerable during the winter months, and the time of year, we are approaching that time. So we are recommending for a one-year extension. But with the, if you, as I said today, did in my report, we do have two levels of plan documents on that property. One is the master plan for the Eastern Gateway, and the other is the official plan. The province would also have to come in because the property is a comprehensive development area, and they would have to apply for a concept plan approval. So they have to get through three levels of planning in order to get a permanent use on that site. So there is no extending this next year. That's not an option if it is approved by council.
Thank you. And I think I have a couple more questions, if that's okay, and it'll probably be geared to you, Jason, more than Laurel at this point, because we've had a year, and we heard your application a year ago, and I guess, you know, in a year, I'd be interested to see how much gain has been made towards your permanent plan. I look in our report, and the PEI Housing Corporation indicates that dwellings will allow for temporary placement of people till they can be placed in more permanent, till they receive government-provided services and support. Do we have a lot of data on how many people have moved from our temporary shelters into permanent residence as a result of all the support they've received? Do you have any data on that?
We can take a look and get, and provide that data. I don't have it with me tonight.
Yeah, that's probably important, if that's part of the plan. Another concern I have, because I know this is important, and my heart is vulnerable for the, for the houseless people, knowing that we're coming into cold season again, it's frustrating that we're actually looking at another temporary variance because a year's a long time. Our fire departments indicated that there's no sprinkler systems in these mobile units, which is part of our fire code. Back in June, there was correspondence in the legislation to indicate, I wasn't sure, one minute there was sprinklers and the next minute, they're going to be installed in due time. Can you tell me where those sprinkler systems are right now?
Sure, yes. So there, there currently is no sprinkler system in the facility. We, we took alternative measures to ensure the fire safety staff were, were comfortable with, with the modulators in the, in the previous permit. We do have a plan. We are going out to tender for the installation of the sprinkler system by the end of next week. So the tender document should be released by the end of next week with regards to the installation of the sprinklers and the modulators.
But this conversation happened in June, when we knew there was no sprinklers. For, do we not have regulation for that within our own city somewhere? Laurel, could you answer that?
Yes, through the chair. We do have regulations for that, and that's why we consult it with the fire department. If council chooses to extend this variance or approve the new variance, they have made it very clear, our fire department, that they will not approve their end of the permit application without those sprinkler systems being installed, because they do have concern for life safety.
So will the residents that use this service be put out in the cold then for that reason? Because it, from what I understand, according to the June legislation, it can take months to complete an installation of a properly-installed sprinkler system.
That is my understanding, that it is a requirement. I would have to consult with the fire chief on that, but he was very adamant in his correspondence with, with the planning department that that would be a requirement, and that sprinkler system would be needed to allow an extension of the use over the winter months. They do, I mean...
I, I guess I'm concerned why we're seeing an application where we're talking life safety, and we're talking about our humanity of wanting to make sure people are in safe, but we don't have proper infrastructure in place based on our codes. And it's been a year since they've been operating, and now we're back looking for an extended. You know, it causes me a little bit of concern how to approve something that's not up to code.
Yes, through the chair. Yes, through the chair. I do agree with your concerns, and that is why the, you know, the requirement is there for the life safety code. And I think that the onus is on the province to make sure that that occurs, if they want this use extended. That onus is not on the city. So, I mean, the province is the applicant. They've been aware of this requirement for over a year, and if they want to continue to provide this service on that site, I think they need to step to the plate and get the system in place.
And do we have power to not, to shut that down, if they're not ready to operate?
Fire department does.
Pardon me?
It is my understanding that the fire department does.
And is that part of what we're agreeing to agree, if the temporary variance is approved?
That is one of the conditions of the approval. It's in the report.
Okay. I'll probably have another question. I'll let someone else talk. Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Kenny.
Thank you, Chair. And I guess this question would be to the province. About a year ago, when we met to give approval for one year, I made the comment that there seemed to be an awful lot of concern and anger amongst the residents of the area. And I remember suggesting that perhaps some of those residents, at least, could be involved in a committee that could present their concerns and the problems that they were seeing and having. And I was told that that would happen. Tonight now, when the gentleman from the province talked about relationships, he talked about a contact person who's identified to respond to concerns or complaints. So I guess my question is, how is that going? That, those concerns and complaints, is there a number of them? Are they, is there less than there was last year, or how that's going?
Yes, so we do, like I did mention, we have our, we have our contact name of our operations manager that the public in the community are aware of. To be honest, we have not heard a significant amount of complaints by that avenue, to be honest.
Do you have any idea?
Going well. I don't, I don't believe that the...
Or are there regular meetings?
Number of complaints, I'd have to go back and get that information.
Okay. Or do you know if there's regular meetings on a monthly basis, or anything like that?
We have, we have established a committee that includes members of our nonprofit community and the police and fire services, but there is not an individual from the public on that, on that committee. But that, we do have a committee that kind of deals with the issues within the community, based on representation from police and fire and our nonprofit groups.
Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead, Counselor Beck.
Thank you for your report, Laurel, and Jason as well, too. I wasn't here, of course, for last year, when this got approved. But there's a couple of dates, I think, that I'm just looking for date clarification. I saw that the shelter did open on December 9th. We are looking for a one-year extension. That's a one-year extension from what date? Is it from the date it was approved, or is it from the date that the shelter actually opened? What are we looking at with there?
Through the chair, it's from the date that the city issued a permit.
Which was what?
I would have to confirm that, for the permit approval date.
Okay. I think the, in the report, there was one part, if I can just find it here. Give me one second as I scroll through my file.
Laurel, just one second, Counselor Beck. Laurel, there's something wrong with your mic. Would you take that seat and talk at that seat instead of that? Thank you. It's not the mic?
The mic is still on.
Oh, the mic is just not on teams.
Can we just get you to turn that mic on, and then see if you can speak into it? Because the province can't hear you.
Hello? Okay. We're good now.
Ask Jason.
Hi, Jason, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Oh, sorry. Thanks, Jules. You know, and I guess in this, where they were talking about the positives here, or in the columns, in the first column, they said, "Temporary approval provides opportunity for province to establish long-term sustainable plan for emergency shelters," saying this again next year, as was outlined earlier. But I think this is really, I know there was some lack of clarity around what has been done and what steps have been taken, but I think this should be a message that whatever it is that is coming down the road has to get expedited here. And I, and I would say quickly, because people are looking for that. We understand and have tremendous compassion, and deep compassion for the people that need the support. And I'm going to support this. I'm going to support the extension for this year. But I think it has to get, we can't be kicking this long-term plan down the road any further. Temporary solutions are not going to cut it, and we have to get moving on it. So that would be just a general comment. Overall, I am going to support the variance continuing for this year, but I would have no part of it at any other point in time beyond that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Beck. Rosemary has a question.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is a question for Jason, and it's just around the long-term plan. A year ago, when we met and recommended that temporary, approval for temporary housing be granted, there was a lot of discussion from the province at that time around a long-term plan. So could you please update us on what progress you have made around your long-term planning for this very important population, and major problem for the city and the province?
So for the long-term plan for the Park Street site, that work is ongoing. As many know, we are in the process, or the province is in the process of completing the environmental assessment. And after we, we should have that, that information back to us within the next few weeks to month. So after we receive that information from, from the environmental assessment, we can, we then plan to complete a comprehensive development of that site, and determine the best and highest use of that property, adhering to all of the master plans that was referenced before. So that is in the works. We are currently kind of just waiting on that environmental assessment, with the plan to proceed with the more comprehensive development very shortly thereafter.
Thank you. You know, given all the concerns from the residents in the area, I'm wondering, what other sites have you considered, and what other options are you looking at?
With respect to the emergency shelter?
Well, with respect to all the services for this population, so the emergency shelter, the, you know, whatever other services are needed for this population, what other, what other options are you considering in terms of sites where you might locate these services?
With regards to sites for the services for this population group, I think, obviously, with regards to the Community Outreach Center, that is, that is something that the province is working on right now, in an effort to relocate the Community Outreach Center. So that's currently ongoing. From a shelter perspective, we worked with the city of Charlestown in last year, trying to develop a plan for, or tried to figure out the best site for the emergency shelter. And this was, and this was the best option at the time, and then we believe that this continues to be the best option on a temporary basis, for sure. And like I mentioned, we are in the process of developing a further plan for the site long-term.
Great. Thank you for that. Do I have any other questions? Counselor McCabe?
It's more, again, sorry, Jason, and I had a long day, so maybe I'm just having a hard time understanding. So you said you're in the process of starting the sprinklers now. Like, how long before these come into conformity? I guess, you know, and no disrespect, but I know things tend to take a long time when they get to, through your level of government, by the time they're completed. Sort of like the environmental assessment. When I researched that, it said on the site, sixty days to six months, you can expect phase one of an environmental assessment to be complete. How, why is this taking so long? Do you know the answer to that?
So we did engage a consultant to work on the sprinkler system for the modular complexes, kind of shortly thereafter the legislation. So we did engage that person. I think, at the end of the day, it is, it is a complex system for these modular complexes, so it does take a little bit of time for, for design. Obviously, that's, you know, no excuse, but I think there is, there's just a period of time that's needed for that design piece. And like I mentioned, we are in the process of going out to tender for that work, and we're optimistic that we can get that work done very quickly. But it is, I recognize the time that has passed, that has passed since, since our last approval.
Yeah, perception on priority, it makes it a little bit challenging. And the environmental assessment, you know, I know it's, we know that this is a priority, so why is this taking so long?
I'm not privy to all the conversations around the environmental assessment. The Department of Transportation is managing that. But again, I think it did go out to an RFP process, and it did, you know, we did engage the consulting firm to do the work. It's, I believe, in the final stages, from what I have been informed of, and I expect within the next few weeks, it'll be final, and then we will be able to formalize the plan for the site.
And you're fielding the difficult questions. I guess for me, when I think it's a lot of money to put into a sprinkler system, into a temporary unit, when we don't know if they're ever going to be able to be there permanently. So I'm wondering if that maybe is part of the holdback.
No, I think we're, we're committed to installing the sprinkler system. We recognize that it's needed. So that is definitely a commitment that we're, we're going to fulfill. It isn't held up by any means by the environmental assessment.
Well, that's good, because I'm understanding tonight that without that sprinkler system, your temporary variance will expire on October 13th, so hopefully, they get at that pretty quick. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McCabe. Are there any other questions from the board?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead, Sin.
Thank you, Chair. And this is a question for Jason. So correct me if I heard you wrong. Did you say that this facility is, you know, you were working on a long-term plan on this particular site?
Thank you. The, the long-term plan for the development of the Park Street site, correct?
Okay, so after a year, when the permit expires, supposing the board recommends for the extension of the permit and the variance, and it expires, you would still need to construct there, right?
Construct a new facility?
Yes.
So I think at the end of the day, the, the plan is, is, our plan here is to develop a comprehensive plan for the site. It may or may not include buildings for the site. With regards to our temporary shelter, our modular complexes that we currently have in place on a temporary basis, my initial thought would be that those would continue to be there, but with permanent approval from the city through our comprehensive development application.
Thanks, Jason. Question for Laurel. Is this something the city has considered, the planning department?
Yes, through the chair. We are not at the, we're not, we don't have the opportunity right now to consider that, because there is extensive planning consultation that would have to take place. So if the province were to come in with that type of application, we would have to go through those processes, and the board, council, and the public would all have to be involved with that. So we are not in a position to make a recommendation on that at this time.
Thank you, Laurel. And so what I understand is, there is a process to follow, and between the time when you start the process, and the time the application, you know, this temporary permit is over, there is no actual plan, you know, what will happen to the site, or what will happen to the, to the, you know, the population which is accommodating the site, right?
Yes, through the chair. So my recommendation would be to the province, that if they're planning to apply for something like this, they should do it sooner than later, because there are very stringent documents on that property. And I mean, the Eastern Gateway Master Plan was a document that, there was a considerable amount of work put into that in public consultation, and the public do have an expectation of what is going to be placed on that site as per that plan. So the public would have to be involved in any changes to that master plan.
Thanks, Laurel. And, you know, and through the chair, I think, at this point of time, you know, there is one aspect that we have to consider, the process and the, and this, what is within city's jurisdiction, that we have to follow the process and consultations and changing of this, of the, of the bylaws, if I'm not mistaken. Am I right, Laurel, on that?
Yes, through the chair. You would have to definitely follow that process and the bylaw amendments and the plan amendments. It's not a matter of coming in for another variance application. There's a lot of public consultation that would be required. And I mean, as you're all aware, an official plan amendment is a fairly rigorous process, and on top of that, you've also got another layer, which is the master plan. So, I mean, there's a lot of challenges to the site if the province are looking to change the use long-term on this property. And it's going to be through public consultation, and council would have to determine whether they felt that was the appropriate use long-term for the property.
Thanks, Laurel. And through Madam Chair, I think here is an issue, because we are really not considering what will happen to this population should the permit expire. And also, we are not, the province is not clear on their plan, long-term plan, what will happen afterwards, should the city allow this variance without, with the strict condition that there is no extension on this. So, you know, like the police, like the fire and public works, I think the province would have to give a satisfactory, you know, you know, answer, or, you know, in a way, have to satisfy the city planning board and the city council, that there is a plan, there is a concrete plan, and that will not require any changes, and have considered the city point of view, where we would not have to go through extensive public consultation. So this is where I, I think I would like to raise this point, and for everyone, for their consideration. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you for that. Sin, your worship, you had a question?
Yes, Madam Chair. Sorry for, excuse me for being late. I was at another engagement, but rushed back to get here for this meeting. Two things happened today. First thing this morning, CBC News reported that City of Halifax have to open another five parks because of the unhoused, roofless population in their city. They do not have enough beds, shelters for the unhoused. And I know a friend of my son, who lives in the north side of Halifax, a beautiful green park that was there up until last year, now has thirty-five tents. And the problem is worsening throughout the country. And then today, this afternoon, CMHC, the Canadian Mortgage Housing Corporation, still sees housing supply, wow, as a shortage. Imagine they're saying that, a shortage of 3.5 million homes by 2030. And I see the City of Charlestown is not at zero vacancy. We're in the minus. We're in the minus, because we just do not have the housing. And if we go back to last February, last February, the coldest day in years, if we did not have that shelter in place, people would have frozen. That is a fact. And yesterday, when I came into this city hall with one of the participants here in the audience, David, I will not give his last name, was evicted from his apartment. He's 68 years old. He has nowhere to live. He has to go to the Bedford McDonald House, and if that is full, he will have to go to Park Street. We do have a crisis, and this is a temporary solution. And I was talking to someone in government last night, and I said, where is the long-term plan? And as the chair can tell you, when we met with the two ministers of Health and Housing, we have a housing continuum. Well, what's the housing continuum? What are the, what are the milestones? What are the benchmarks? Just give us an idea of the short term. We know what the short term is. It's a shelter. It's emergency shelter. What's the midterm? What's the long-term? Then if we look at the next issue that we're going to be dealing with here tonight, the OPS, this is, I believe, the fifth year, Madam Chair, that the previous government and this government have been talking about the acute care and mental health campus out off Acadian Drive, which is to be a provider of many services, staged services for treating those that have drug addiction. And I can tell you that just by going into this slightly, I come from a family that had drug addictions, and it's not a pretty site. And it's, it's a very long journey. So on this issue of the temporary emergency shelter, yes, we have to provide a temporary permit for another year, but there has to be a long-term plan. This cannot keep going on. Let's hope we don't get to where Halifax is at, where Halifax is going, or where Monkton's going. We have a crisis, and I think that this is a very important discussion that we're having. We had it the other night in council that went on for three and a half hours, and this is that we cannot be ignorant to the discussions of this issue that we're facing today. So I think that the discussion that we're having here today, and that we'll have in the future, hopefully, Madam Chair, we will find at least something that gives us a guiding light to where we can get somewhere to address this issue.
Thank you, worship. And just a reminder to our applicant, there were a couple of questions that the, that the board had asked for and did want some clarification for, and one was some of the data around the successes of those that had frequented the temporary housing and how that, how that kind of filtered into the housing continuum, the success stories of, you know, did they move on to long-term housing? And then the second one was the, the ability to call in with your complaints and concerns. I believe you were going to give us an update on what and how many, like a report on how many calls and complaints you received over the year. Folks on the board, were there any other, were those the two main questions that we had wanted Jason to follow up on? Anybody else have any other ones? Jackie?
One additional question that I would be interested in hearing from the province is how they plan to liaise with the community on an ongoing basis, whether temporary shelters are located where they are at the moment or in another neighborhood. There are going to be surrounding communities that are impacted, and the method of consulting with the public can't just be a one-time thing on a Wednesday night. It has to be ongoing. There has to be agreements in place. I'd be curious to know how the province plans to establish that type of agreement going forward.
Thanks, Jackie. And, you know, that certainly has been something that we've heard a lot of from our residents here in Charlottetown, and that's the lack of public consultation. So Jason, over to you, would love to get a response from you on that.
Yeah, so I think on our, on our end, with regards to the, kind of the conversation between the public and our staff at the shelter, that is something that's ongoing, that's always available. I do appreciate and recognize the need for public consultation going forward. We have, as I mentioned previously, we have established a committee that's made up of some nonprofit organizations and the police and fire services, and we have had the discussion about, about having a sitting member of the public on that committee as well. So that's something that we are considering. And I do recognize when we, when we do have our longer, longer-term plan and more concrete development for the area, I recognize the need for significant public consultation that that will require, and we look forward to re-engaging the public to do that.
I think it needs to go beyond consultation, and it needs to, we need to start talking about things like MOUs, or different agreements that are binding, where communities have say. I don't want to go too off track, because I know the purposes of this meeting, but I just wanted to highlight that.
Thank you, Jackie. Are there any other questions from the board? Oh, Rosemary?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I just wanted to sort of reemphasize what a lot of people are saying, that we do need a long-term solution. And I don't think temporary housing is a part of a viable long-term solution. People do need a place to live, and I think they need some green space. And that's why I would ask you, again, Jason, to consider, you know, maybe there are other options for where this could be located, other than on a parking lot. Anyway, just, I think we really need to have some information, but it sounds to me as if the province has got a goal in mind, and that's to develop the temporary housing of Park, Park Street. Correct me if I'm wrong. Thank you.
Over to you, Jason.
Yes, sorry. Yeah, so our plan currently is obviously to extend the variance for the temporary shelter while going through and developing a comprehensive plan for the Park Street site. I can't say with 100% certainty that the shelter will remain at Park Street. I appreciate your comments. But our current plan would be to ensure that we are able to continue to operate our shelter on Park Street while developing a more comprehensive plan for the site.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Sin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And this is for Jason. I understand this, the position of the provincial government is to build something, to come up with a comprehensive long-term plan for that particular site. And yet, the city planner has already stated that in order to build something like that, it has to go through the process. So Jason, what I'm not understanding is that by the time the variation, you know, the temporary permit ends, and the new application for which you would have to put a new application before the city, what is the solution? You're not going to be, you know, once it ends, the site would have to be moved from there, right? It cannot exist. Between then and you create a comprehensive or a permanent solution on that site, hypothetically speaking, you, you need time for that. And what would happen to these people? What would happen to the neighborhood? What would about the safety of the neighborhood? There is no comprehensive. I hope you can understand that you have to come up with a plan, and it's not like you can, you decide on a construction, and you can build something overnight, and there is something new, a new structure the next day. And I think the government would have to come up with some alternate plan. Well, that is your, you know, absolutely your jurisdiction, where you want to put the site. But for this particular site, I think, I think the city would have to be satisfied that this major variance ends, and the city doesn't go through the process, you know. And I'm going to be candid about that. I'm going to vote in favor of this, for the temporary variance. But what I'm not satisfied is what happens afterwards. And what happens afterwards, and if you put another application a year from now, it will still, we would go through the process, because there is a process, there is a bylaw, and that will be a time-taking process. So it is not a win-win situation for the city, or for the people who are right now the most vulnerable. So the, it is, the onus is really on the province to come up with a good, sound strategy. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Sin. Are there any other questions from the board? If not, what we have from the staff is a recommendation to proceed to council with a recommendation from the staff that we allow the, another one-year temporary variance. So the question for the board this evening is whether or not they are accepting staff's recommendation for this to go on to council for a final vote on, on whether or not you are going to allow it to proceed for another year, and based on, of course, the conditions like the sprinkler systems that must be in place before it can continue. And were there other conditions that I'm forgetting?
Police fencing.
Oh, yeah, police fencing, they were already outlined in, in the previous one. If I'm forgetting anything, it was outlined. I'm just, you know, I just want to flag that whole electrical sprinkler system thing that had been avoided for a year. So, so I will need a motion from somebody from a, oh, yeah, okay. So Counselor Norman Beck has moved to accept staff's recommendation. Do I have a seconder? Seconded by Sin to accept staff's recommendation to recommend to council that we would proceed with a one more year temporary variance, a major variance, to continue with the two modular units that would house 50 unhoused people in temporary housing. All those in favor?
No, Madam Chair. So the motion's on the floor? Want to speak to the motion?
Yes, the motion is on the floor. You're right. Anyone like to speak to the motion?
So just as you said, Madam Chair, this is a recommendation to move up to council, because the process works, the advisory board advises council, the final decision is left with council. So I am voting to move this forward to council, so that we can have a discussion on the floor of this chamber, to make sure that council members, whether they represent the area or they represent other areas of the city, have an opportunity to speak to this issue, and that will be the final decision. But we have to remember that we have a partner here, and that partner is the provincial government of Prince Edward Island. We have to collaborate with the province, because I do not want to go through another February as of last year, because we're not quick enough in getting our reception center up, and we're highly criticized for that. But thank God, the provincial government came through with those 50 units out on Park Street. So they do have a necessary part in, in the housing continuum, but the housing continuum needs to be, must be, long-term. This is the short term. Where's the midterm? Where's the long-term? That's the key here. So I will be voting in favor of this, to move it up to council, because we are an advisory board. Thank you.
Thank you, and I believe Counselor McCabe?
Thank you. And I'm human, too, your worship, so I definitely want to make sure that our vulnerable people are not cold in the winter, 100%. What I want to make sure, though, is that we also hold applicants accountable, regardless if it's the provincial government of Prince Edward Island, or if it's Deputy Mayor Yankoff and Hurst Street in Charlottetown. We have processes in place, there's rules to be followed, and our job is to ensure that. So I want to just get confirmation from our city staff that we do have planning people that can make sure that these conditions are met within a timely fashion, and that rules will be followed. Do I have a commitment of that?
Yes, we will work with the departments, the necessary departments, to make sure that the conditions are met. And it is approval for the one year, so those conditions will have to be reviewed by Public Works and Fire.
Okay, thank you.
And Madam Chair, just to follow up with the Counselor McCabe said, that's why we have bylaw enforcement officers. So if we have a complaint, that bylaw officer can, will, will have the ability to go to that site, and if the equipment is not in to ensure that we have a safe site for the unhoused roofless population of our community, then we will follow up with charges, correct?
Through the chair. That is the important factor with that, is to ensure that there is safety for those residents that are using the overnight shelter.
Okay, question called. All those in favor of moving this on to council? Okay, any opposed? Okay, it's unanimous. So the next time you will hear this application will be at our next council meeting, where council will make a final decision. Thank you. Okay, we can go on to our second application for this evening, and once again, it will be Laurel Palmer Thompson, Planner Three. And over to you, Laurel.
Just want to check that the mic is working, is it, or are you able to hear me? Would you prefer I use this one for this, for the whole presentation? Okay, I apologize upfront, because you're going to hear a bit of repetitive information. We're having some technical difficulties, but I'm going to apologize upfront, because you are going to hear some repetitive information, because the applications are similar, because of the fact that they are the same property. So this is a request for temporary use, major variance for the property located 15 Park Street. Again, it's PID number 365593, and the property is located on the northeast corner of Park Street and Riverside Drive. Somebody's scrolling my... Just going to go back to the zoning map. Jason, can you pull up the zoning map, please? Let's go full screen. Yeah. Oh, no. One down. The next one. Down to Park Street. It's at the bottom. No. Third one up. Right there. Just go full screen on that, please. The official planned use designation is Comprehensive Planning Area and its Zone Comprehensive Development Area, CDA, by the City of Charlottetown Zoning and Development Bylaw. The property owner, the government of Prince Edward Island, is requesting this major variance for temporary use to permit overdose, an overdose prevention site to operate in the northerly portion of the property, as shown on attachment E of the report. This is for a period of one year. The application is being made under Section 3.91F, Major Variants of the Zoning and Development Bylaw, which allows major variance applications for a temporary use or structure in a manner otherwise prohibited by this bylaw for a period lasting no longer than one year. Planning board must consider the request and make a recommendation to council, and council may approve or reject that request. So property context, the subject property is 6.4 acres in size, and it's currently occupied by the former government of PEI Maintenance Garage and Office Space, recently used as COVID-19 testing site. There's a surface parking lot on the property. Let's go back to... There's a surface parking lot on the property, the former PEI Maintenance Garage and Office Space, and 50 temporary emergency transitional housing units are just our previous subject. So on October 13, 2022, as you know, council grounded the temporary variance for the, the emergency housing units. Government of PEI staff have indicated that there is an environmental assessment on the property, and it's currently underway, and it's scheduled to be completed in November this year. And the government has indicated that once this report is complete, they will be in a position to propose permanent uses in buildings for the property in accordance with the Eastern Gateway Master Plan and Official Plan. So the surrounding neighborhood context, it's, it's the same as before. I, if you like, I can run through that again, or we can skip over that part. Madam Chair, would you prefer I, I ran through the context again? Madam Chair, would you prefer I ran through the context again for the same application, or just continue?
I think you can breeze through it. I think we've all heard it.
Okay.
I think people are anxious to get asked their questions and stuff, so...
Thank you. So, public feedback, a notification letter was sent in accordance with Section 3.9, major variances of the zoning and development bylaw, on August 24, 2023, and notice was sent to 13 property owners located within 100 meters of the subject property. The notice advised them of the major variance request by the government for a one-year temporary use, and the deadline to submit responses to the city's letter was on September 8, 2023. In response to the notification letter, 10 letters of opposition, three neutral letters were received, and 19 letters of support were received prior to the 12 noon deadline on Friday, September 8, 2023. Comments in the letters were related to both the OPS and the temporary shelter variance requests. They've been included in the report summary and the comments received in response to the letters. And you will note that in the report, the red text denotes the comments that were specific to emergency housing, so it's opposite from the previous report. Additional letters were also received after 12 noon deadline, which included one letter of opposition, three neutral letters, and six letters of support. They also, they are also included in this report. So, in terms of the project, the OPS structure is comprised of two modular units, 14 by 60 and 16 by 60, for a combined square footage of 30 by 60. And it's rate, proposed to be located right here, and this is two combined units. The Department of Health and Wellness is proposing to place fencing around the back and sides of the structure to allow for privacy, and security personnel are proposed to be in place to monitor the exterior of the property. The Department of Health and Wellness have stated in their application, the OPS will be operated by Peers Alliance, Inc., which is a nonprofit organization with subject matter expertise in harm reduction. The service will be overseen by the Department of Health and Wellness. And there's currently two modular complexes on the southern part of the property, and that's the, for the temporary shelter, and they are located here. The province has indicated that the OPS and emergency shelter, they'll operate as distinct services from one another, and in terms of location, with exception to the west end of Beach and Park Street, which is an established residential neighborhood, the area of the city tends to be industrial in nature and contains uses such as the school board, government garage, and parking lots. North of the site is the Charlottetown Driving Park. Also, the southwest of the site is land owned by the city's zone institutional, which is used to hold events. And as stated, this area of the city falls within Area Two, Character Areas Three and Four of the Eastern Gateway Master Plan, and Character Areas Three and Four of the Eastern Gateway Master Plan designate these areas as a site for a multi-use sports and entertainment complex. The plan recommends for both parks and beach streets to form a crescent, and access Riverside Drive, access to Riverside Drive would be cut off from Park Street when these two streets are joined. A new road would be constructed on the north side of the provincial lands, which would provide access to DP Murphy property, and the long-term vision for the plan incorporates DP Murphy's land as an area for higher-order commercial and office uses that would also support the MUSEC. Given the direction in both the Eastern Gateway Master Plan, the official plan for this property, any long-term approvals on this land would require an amendment to these planning documents. This is also in addition to the CDA approval, as stated earlier. The official plan also recognizes the need for healthcare initiatives. However, it specifies the requirement for community and stakeholder engagement. Prior to this variance application, the Department of Health and Wellness held a public consultation meeting with area residents, and it should be noted that the province seeks to establish this use long-term within the city. A more stringent public consultation would be required involving all levels of government, and healthcare professionals should also be involved. An advisory committee, which includes neighborhood representatives, should also be formed, and this recommendation was outlined in the What We Heard report from the province after they held their public consultation. During the review of the application, planning staff also consulted with city departments, and as we discussed earlier, police are looking for additional officers, but with this application, if the OD, or if the OPS gets approved, then instead of the four that would be required for the temporary shelter, six would be required instead, so it would be an additional two. And those two officers would monitor the neighborhood within that area of influence that we discussed for the province, and, or would monitor that neighborhood, and police have indicated that the cost of hiring those officers would have to be agreed to upfront. So, Fire required that both the OPS and the temporary shelter have sprinkler systems installed under NFPA 1, and Public Works are requiring that a new public multi-use pathway fencing and associated lighting be constructed under PIDs 336537 and 825927 to ensure direct and safe pedestrian connection between Kent Street, Fitzroy Street intersections, and the subject property. They also requested that the main entrance to the facility be relocated to the satisfaction of the manager of the city's Public Works Department. And the city, as we discussed, or this property, as we discussed, it is located on the periphery of a low-density residential neighborhood, park and beach streets, and as stated, concerns were raised by residents in the neighborhood at the public consultation held by the province. So, as a mitigative measure and to address the concerns raised by the residents, the six police officers that have been requested by the city's chief of police are to patrol and monitor the area of influence, and six officers are included, would include the four officers that we talked about earlier. The officers are to be employed for a period of one year from the date of issuance of a building and development permit if the application is approved, and staff are recommending that the province funds and operates daily garbage and safe disposal cleanup services within the public right-of-way throughout the area of influence. Notwithstanding, the area of influence does contain other amenities that are beneficial to the overdose prevention facility, as it's, it's close to shelters, it's close to other transition facilities and medical services, and it's within safe walking distance for many of the clients. As previously stated, the Eastern Gateway Plan designates the future land use for this property as the location for a multi-use events facility, and if this variance is approved for one year, it will not compromise the long-term intent for future use of the property. It's staff's recommendation that no extensions be given to this variance application should approval be granted. An extension past one year cannot be contemplated as it requires extensive public consultation with major amendments to the official plan, Eastern Gateway Plan, and the CDA comprehensive development area zone. So, staff are prepared to support the application since the proposed location can be operationalized quickly to meet the immediate health needs of this population. This will give the city, in conjunction with the province and other community stakeholders, an opportunity over the next year to establish long-term sustainable plans within the greater community that they, allows them to address this greater health issue. So, the planning department encourages planning board to recommend counsel approve, recommend to council for approval of a temporary use variance to accommodate an overdose prevention site. That recommendation is subject to the recommendation of police, fire, and Public Works, and subject to the operational specifications submitted by PEI Department of Health and Wellness in their application submission. And if there's any questions, I'm happy to take them.
Thank you, Laurel, and maybe before I open it up to the questions, we will get the applicant to give their report first. So, Sean, are you there?
Hello, hi, Sean Martin here. Is the audio working okay?
You just need to be a little louder.
Sean Martin here. Is the audio working okay for us?
Yes, it's working great, thank you.
Okay, and we'll keep the microphone close. Feel free to advise if any issues. We'll try video next here. So far, so good. Okay, video is turning on, and is this working?
Yes, we see you.
Thank you, Chair. What I'll do next, and what's most important, will be to share the presentation, and we're working with Jason here. Now, Jason, what I want to ensure is that I can, that we're seeing the full slides. Now, right now, Jason, what I believe I'm seeing would be the video, or the video chat. I think our goal is to bring up full slides. So, we'll just take a moment, and we'll sort this out. Just as we're getting this sorted out, I also want to, I'll turn it over to my colleague here at CPHO, just to do a quick introduction.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Erin Bentley, and I am the manager of the Communicable Disease and the Vaccine Preventable Disease Program, as well as a Senior Public Health Policy and Planning Officer. And before Sean's presentation, I would just like to make a few key points before he starts
One thing I'll just suggest, Jason Doucette, is would it work better if I were to share my screen as opposed to you sharing the video screen?
Yes, please.
Would that work? All right, let's try that here now. Okay, we are now sharing a Teams presentation, or rather, a PowerPoint presentation. Might just take a moment here. Okay, now I'm going to go to presentation mode, and I'll just make sure that what comes up is correct. Okay, this looks good.
Good to go.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Chair, and members of the planning board for the opportunity to speak with you today. Just before Sean starts, there's a few items that I'd like to raise and bring to your attention. I believe we all have shared goals and desired outcomes for Charlottetown and all islanders. We all want Charlottetown to be a safe place to live, to work, and to spend time. We all want solutions to public substance use and improperly disposed needles and syringes. These are tough conversations that we're having, but they're ones that we have to have in order to start down the road to improve public safety and community well-being in Charlottetown. Prevention and treatment for substance use are important solutions to addressing issues related to drugs. Harm reduction in the form of an overdose prevention site is another important service that complements prevention and treatment. All three of these services work together. To be clear, the Community Outreach Center in Charlottetown is not an overdose prevention site, nor is the emergency shelter an overdose prevention site. PEI does not have a designated overdose prevention site at this time. It's important to recognize what solutions that an overdose prevention site can provide and what it cannot provide. One, an overdose prevention site will not solve all of the issues of homelessness in the city. An overdose prevention site will not resolve all of the concerns relating to mental health and addictions in the city. And thirdly, it will not solve all of the issues related to illicit drug use. However, when we do focus on what an overdose prevention site is designed to do, there's an overwhelming amount of peer-reviewed evidence, over 122 studies that we have demonstrating the positive impacts of an overdose prevention site for both members of the community and for people who use drugs. The evidence supports that overdose prevention sites minimize overdoses and overdose deaths in people who use drugs, connects the most marginalized people who use drugs to additional supports and services, increases the uptake of addictions and mental health services by people who use drugs. I'm going to repeat that again because I think that's a really important point, that overdose prevention sites increase the number of people who take part in addictions and mental health services. It reduces drug use and needles in public spaces, and it supports public safety and order, and it does not result in an increase in drug trafficking or crime in the surrounding areas. None of the evidence that has been collected and peer-reviewed in journals supports that overdose prevention sites will result in an increase in drug use or crime. We have an increasing number of overdoses in PEI and an increasing number of younger people being impacted by the toxic drug supply and experiencing overdoses. We need more services to help people struggling with mental health and addictions, especially since we are seeing and feeling the impacts in real time in our city. I understand the frustration and empathize with how people are feeling about the issues that the city is facing. These are complex issues. The overdose prevention site is designed to address some of these challenges. I repeat that we do not currently have an overdose prevention site that is designed to minimize the risk of substance use, that will promote public safety, and will connect more people to treatment and additional wraparound services. And I'd like to pass it over to Sean, who's going to do a summary of the situation in PEI, as well as the overdose prevention site.
Thank you very much, Erin. I think that these are some of the information we'll present here quite well. So, I did a quick intro earlier, but I think I skipped my role and job, and we'll cover that. So, Sean Martin, Harm Reduction Coordinator with the Chief Public Health Office in the PEI Department of Health and Wellness. We will give some background information on the overdose prevention site and the reality that there is a need for an overdose prevention site in PEI. It is just PEI and Newfoundland and Labrador at this point, the only provinces and territories in Canada without one. So, with that, we'll jump in. So, just to start with some background facts, so it is a tragic reality here in Canada that there have been over 36,442 people who have died from opioid overdose deaths across Canada, and that's just from 2016 to 2023, since fentanyl really arrived. For example, in 2022, an average of 20 Canadians died per day. In 2021, it was higher, it was 22 Canadians who died every day. And so, what is an overdose prevention site? In brief, it's a, it's a health service that offers services like supervised consumption, drug checking, connection to services, safe disposal opportunities, and other supports. What are the results? Much like Erin referred to, you know, with controversial topics, oftentimes they're studied to death, and what we see from over 100 studies of real services. I need to emphasize that, we're not talking about something that happens in a lab, we're talking about real services and the results. We see that they prevent overdose deaths, of course, connect more people to services, including addictions and mental health treatment and housing, and reduce public substance use. Also, you know, we see that there have been over 36,000 overdose deaths in Canada since 2016. There have been zero deaths in overdose prevention sites. So, I just want to illustrate a few quick slides on where we're at here in PEI. So, first, this chart just shows year-over-year opioid-related overdoses recorded. We see that it's gone up year-over-year. We see for the last two years, we've set record highs, which is not good, and we see, unfortunately, that if the trend holds for 2023, sadly, we are on track to set another record high for recorded overdoses. I really want to underline that this is just recorded overdoses, mainly someone who presents to an emergency department in one of the major hospitals or acute care facilities. If a person refuses medical transport, or if a person were to experience an overdose in their... if a person were to experience an overdose in their home, in their apartment around the street, and they didn't end up in hospital, that may not be recorded. So unfortunately, the real number is higher. I want to speak to what's happening right now, this year. So, so far in 2023, we're only nine months in, a few months left, Island EMS, our ambulance service, reports that one in three overdose responses are fentanyl-related. And fentanyl is an extremely potent, you could say toxic, opioid that is responsible for the vast majority of overdose deaths across Canada. So when we see that one in three overdose responses that Island EMS had to respond to involve fentanyl, that says that things are changing here in PEI. We're not, we're in totally new territory right now. And it helps explain to us why we've been getting calls from frontline service providers and first responders saying, "We had to administer three to seven naloxone doses to reverse that person's overdose. We've never had to do that before." So it shows how we are in new territory here in PEI. What happens when fentanyl enters the illicit drug supply? I mentioned we are seeing more of it here in PEI. We used to be the exception. Unfortunately, we're not anymore. There was a very large seizure of fentanyl by PEI or CMP just this year, hundreds of thousands of doses. So it is here. And what we really need to avoid is what you see on this chart here. This is the province of Ontario when fentanyl entered the illicit drug supply. And this blue line that just shoots through the roof, those are deaths over time that occurred when fentanyl entered the illicit drug supply. So this is really what we need to avoid through overdose prevention. I won't linger too long on this slide because planning staff at the city did a very good job going over it. I'll just note quickly that the overdose prevention site would be the north end of the property. There is one, the highlighted portions have been added just to show the smaller box, the overdose prevention site, and then the outline shows fencing around the back and sides. And that is for privacy, it's also to ensure distinct operations between the Emergency Shelter and the OPS, though there is and will be going forward very tight collaboration. Wanted to help illustrate what the structure would look like, and so these are just some renderings. As you can see, it's a modular build. There's fencing with privacy slats around, around the perimeter, ramping for accessibility, adequate windows, and that's important for sightlines or safety. And there will be cameras, as we'll talk about later, for general safety. One more 3D rendering quickly, just to show that there will be a community drop box outside for safe disposal. So whether the overdose prevention site is operational or not, there will be access to safe disposal, and that's important for increasing access to safe disposal, reducing inappropriate discarded items. There are quite a number of response measures that the province has put forward in response to community feedback. I really want to underline, this is just a short list. The full list is in the What We Heard report that our third-party consultant, Bearcros, following the information session that took place in July. So that report's available online and it's been distributed to our municipal partners at the city of Charlottetown. I'll highlight a few. So additional staff have been added to the OPS staffing model to monitor the exterior of the property. Fencing, as I mentioned, for privacy, for orderly operations. Cameras will be installed on the exterior for safety. There will be security personnel on the property 24/7. For safe disposal, there will be a community drop box outside the OPS. That would make it the fourth such unit. So access is being increased to safe disposal, and that'll support both public health and public safety. Much like the Park Street Emergency Shelter, contact information would be available if any questions and concerns. A few more here, self-service coordination. So it is so important to underline that when we go to an OPS, it is one of the most effective ways to engage some of the hardest-to-reach members of our communities, folks who are hard to engage through the traditional treatment system. And it's at an OPS where we're more likely to have success connecting someone to services, be it treatment, housing, or others. So that'll be a big feature, and there will be a position, a community navigator position dedicated to that. For transportation, the Departments of Housing, Land and Communities, and Health and Wellness have requested a bus stop in the area, and that's both to help people access services, it's also to reduce foot traffic as well, pedestrian foot traffic. The Department of Health and Wellness has oversight over this project, and the program will be evaluated to make sure it's being implemented as designed. Staff are going to have extensive training from overdose response to de-escalation, trauma, and form practice. And there will also be planned our open house tours, and the public is invited. It's really important to us that folks are able to see the OPS, to speak with staff, to ask questions. I understand that with a new service, new to PEI at least, there can be some fear of the unknown. I understand that, and so we hope that the open house can respond to that. Okay, so just to summarize our last slide here, we are seeing a record-high number of drug-related overdoses here in PEI. So far in 2023, one in three EMS overdose responses are fentanyl-related. That is new, and quite frankly, that keeps me up at night. Overdose prevention sites, they've been proven to reduce deaths, connect more people to treatment, and reduce public substance use. And I want to finish on this. An overdose prevention site, it is not intended to be a fix-all for issues like poverty, homelessness, addictions, mental illness. But we cannot properly address those issues without an OPS. There will be a population of very high needs, very marginalized, where that's going to be their door to further services and supports. And in the immediate, and I would argue most importantly, that's going to make sure that they stay alive. So finally, just in response to community feedback, as we went over, the province has put forward specific actions for safe and orderly operations at the OPS rather, and the details of that are in the What We Heard report that is available online. So we will leave it at that and we'll remain on the call.
Thank you, Sean, for your presentation. I think we'll open it up now to the folks that are here. We have a, we have a speaking list, so I can just start with the folks that are on the list. I can start with Patrick Cody.
Hello, everyone. Thanks for giving me your ears here tonight, as well as everyone who's listening virtually as well. So I'm going to read a letter here regarding the proposed location of the OPS site. I do speak kind of in the context of this site being part of a centralized area for wraparound services in one geographic location, because that's how it's being planned by the majority provincial government as part of the throne speech. So anyways, I do wish to express my opposition to placing the overdose prevention site at the Park Street location. This opposition is in good faith to all stakeholders of the proposed location, including the clients who would use the service. I have served members of the homeless community in Charlottetown as they reach worker at the Community Outreach Center in Charlottetown for a few years, and I have deep concerns about the effectiveness of this location due to the lack of accessibility to a larger pool of Islanders and residents of Charlottetown who would potentially use the service if it were a mobile service professionally ran. I also believe that having a mobile service would avoid the unnecessary economic and other risks that Island residents would have to face in the immediate geographic area of the proposed Park Street location. As an Islander, I'm surprised and disappointed that the proposed OPS location on Park Street is part of a larger political strategy of the majority provincial government to implement a centralized area for wraparound services for the homeless population. These services would include the OPS, the Community Outreach Center, and a shelter on Park Street in one geographic residential area. I do support seamless accessibility of all these services for whom they serve, but I also believe there should be a respectable degree of separation of them to enable effective service delivery for clients and to preserve their dignity and their respect while they access these services. I also support separation of services geographically and not in one centralized area to avoid all economic and other risks being burdened onto one residential area of Charlottetown and the province. Charlottetown and our province are small, and as we have seen, even one service site such as the Community Outreach Center can have a disrupting effect both to its clients and to the residents when it's near a residential area. This is a unique circumstance of a small city and province that requires unique consideration. Ideally, I think the overdose prevention site would be mobile and professionally ran. It would come to areas where clients are known to be at. The Community Outreach Center would also not be in a residential area, including Park Street, but it would be complemented with effective and seamless transportation and complementary infrastructure for the client so that it could remain accessible. Situations like these would allow these services to exist in an accessible way, and no unnecessary risks would be placed on residents of the proposed residential area. So far, what's being recommended is top-down service implementation without all stakeholders being on board, and this is not a good start for a sustainable service delivery. I ask that you consider these points that I have raised. I think all services in one spot is a bad look for the city of Charlottetown and to PEI. I think tourists and people would judge us when they see everything in one centralized location. I also think a centralized location would have opportunity cost to the surrounding green spaces and area. I also think that a mobile service would remove the cost of two additional police officers if they were moving around, rather than basically criminals knowing where the people they can prey on are at all the time. So anyway, accessibility would be depreciated for all potential clients of an OPS if it were in only one zone of PEI, as opposed to being accessible via a mobile service. A mobile service, part of a larger basket of separated but accessible homeless services, would also not disproportionately burden one area of residents over another. Thank you for your time and for your service to Charlottetown, and for everybody listening tonight.
Thank you, Patrick. That's great. So...
There's people from home apparently that can't hear because that microphone, some people at homework, right?
So...
I'm just going to angle the little mic.
People can use...
Madam Chair.
Okay. Perfect. Okay.
Just wanted, Madam Chair, could I just...
Yes.
Patrick Cody? Was it Patrick Cody?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Matthew Arsenault.
So, Madam Chair, members of the committee, members of the public, so thanks for allowing me to speak here today. So, yeah, for me, it's, this is not a debate about whether or not, about the outcomes that we want. Like, we all want the same outcomes. We want to support those who are suffering with mental health and addiction, but we also want law and order and safety and security, and those are paramount to our society, of course. And as Patrick just said, we have to think about the effectiveness. And I would question the effectiveness of putting these services on this site, and I was going to mention the mobile unit which was brought up here, so I think that could be explored. So basically, I'm just here to say that I believe that this should be either rejected or deferred until a certain number of conditions, so I'm going to add another, a few other points. I'm not going to repeat the same points, so I'll tick those out. But I also just want to be clear, I don't object to the services. I come from a family with addiction as well, and suffered a lot of that myself. So this issue is near and dear to me, and I do want what's best for every citizen. So I just want to make that clear. So I would have a number of concerns with this application. I mean, judging from the previous application, there was a lot of discussion here of a lot of the issues, and it's been a year that they've been there. So there's a lot of issues and shortcomings, and I have very serious questions. So if things like, very fundamental things like putting sprinklers, which is a fire hazard, so as a landlord, I know the importance of that, and that's paramount to me. So that, for me, makes me question whether we should approve this, especially considering this is temporary as well. And it seems like we have other options like a mobile, other options that could be explored. And I think to the mayor's point, there isn't that same urgency with the winter coming. So I think this is something that we could look at other options. The other consideration, and this was in the package, from another citizen about the risks of concentration of services. So when you concentrate those services, there's the, the citizen gave the example of in Ottawa where there was actually, instead of improving the outcome, so we want the outcomes of helping people improve their, the mental health and addiction, we also want the safety and security. So what we've seen in this Ottawa example is that we had neither one of those. So we had a worsening situation. So that's the risks of the concentration of services. So, and the other thing, the other really important point which was mentioned in the previous application, which applies here as well, is the lack of community engagement. And I like with what Ms. Gaiman was saying about having some sort of a binding group with citizens that actually have decisional power as to how these, these, these programs are impacting them. So I know all these people that are here today, they have impacts. We are, where there's noise complaints, there's theft, there's vandalism, there's needles, there's, you know, an eight-year-old got pricked in the park. I mean, this is, this is unacceptable, in my view. I have a young kid, and it's emotional to me to, to see, to see those risks. And I don't want this, and I also want to support them. So I want to find what that balance is, and I want to work. So actually, on that point, I don't know if Jason Doyle is still here, but I would volunteer to lead a citizen group. That, I could, I could go to the doors, I could rally people, I could be a voice. I do this professionally, so I'm volunteering for that. And so I think for all these reasons, I would defer on this one, just for all these risks. And, and I would, I would say that, yeah, it's, I think, for the mobile unit, for the reasons we said earlier, I think it, well, it should go in place here, and I think that we definitely should have that citizen voice reflected. So those are some of my main comments, and I really appreciate the time. And thank you so much for all your work. This is a long meeting for you, and I appreciate all your work. So thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you, Matthew. That was great. Next on our list is Frank Morrison.
Good evening, everyone. As mentioned, my name is Frank Morrison, and I'm an advocate for drug-tobacco-free public places. Have been doing it for 52 years, and we are there. But we have to inform people. I'd like to talk a little bit about the presentations that we heard earlier, and it is difficult for a person to have input. For tonight, for example, we were told that we weren't allowed to speak initially. Then when I got back, yes, you were allowed to speak, but you could only speak for two minutes. And then I was told I'd be first. So I'm not offended by that, but it makes it tough, because we're now two hours in from what we thought was going to start at five minutes, five minutes. But anyway, what concerns me is the language around this, and I know a couple of the young people on the panel here, and it's a tough job, and I don't know who's, I don't know who's making the snowballs. I know you people have to throw them. But we talked about health services and safety. That was number one on Jason's mind. And the other night, Chief Brad said, "If you do not feel safe, you are not safe." So this is at least the fourth time I've heard Sean's presentation, and over 2,000 people would have told us emphatically they are not safe. They do not feel safe in their homes, they do not feel safe at the Outreach Center, or in the injection site. Plus, evidence, and I know Erin mentioned the evidence that I guarantee you is outdated, because the evidence is overwhelming. Safe injection, harm reduction, has been a disaster. Number of them are already closing down, and others are on the verge of closing down. And when we hear information... And when we hear information that there's no overdoses at the injection sites, or overdose prevention sites, call them whatever you like, over 1,500 people have died in Vancouver alone this year. Probably about 25 have already died today, and they have injection sites, they have overdoses, and yet we're asked to buy into it in this province. We talked earlier about the impact, and I'm going to ask you, and I'm going to ask the mayor to say it, the greatest impact in Canada is to announce that Charlottetown and Prince Edward Island, it is illegal in public places to have drugs, use drugs, or use tobacco. Mr. Mayor, would you please confirm that is the truth?
Confirm that the tobacco and everything that you stated is illegal?
No, what I'm saying is the use of illegal drugs.
Okay.
That's why they're called illegal.
Right.
And tobacco, if smoking tobacco products, is illegal in all public places.
We do have a bylaw that states smoking is illegal to smoke.
And drug usage.
Now, when you say illegal drugs, are you talking about OxyContin?
Illegal drugs.
No, no, but OxyContin is a pharmaceutical drug. Are you talking about heroin? Heroin is illegal. Cocaine is illegal.
No, I'm talking illegal drugs.
I don't think I'm qualified to ask or answer.
Why would you be not...
Because a prescription drug is...
I'm not talking to you, Mr. Mayor.
But Frank, if you go back to...
Folks, folks, just a point of order. Frank, you're here to give a presentation and not to direct and ask questions to the folks here. We're here to hear what you have to say, so if you don't mind continuing, that would be amazing.
But Madam Chair, if I could just state, fentanyl is a prescribed drug. OxyContin, fentanyl is for cancer patients, if I'm correct, Rosemary, is that correct? So it is a prescribed drug. So is Percocet, so is Dilaudid. So those are prescribed drugs by doctors. And you remember a doctor that would, worked in this city that gave Valium quite freely, and his license, no, no, let me finish, his license was taken by the College of Physicians and Surgeons. So that's, that's something that is regulated by the college.
All I'm asking is that the mayor and the chief of police, who's already done it, has informed us that it is illegal to use drugs and tobacco in a public place. And they don't have to do it tonight, but I've asked that they please tell the nation. We're wanting to make impact on Prince Edward Island, across the land. Please do not do the same thing that has been a failure across Canada. That's what I'm asking us tonight, and I think we all know the definition of stupidity is doing the same thing over and over again expecting a different result. So the, Erin mentioned that it will not, you know, solve homelessness and lack of food and so on, but I guarantee you, if we as a province implement drug-free places, that's what I'm asking you to do, and I guess, Jason, I would ask you, the, the outreach, the housing is 100% drug and tobacco-free. Is that correct?
Chair is gone.
Jason's gone?
Yeah.
So I would assume that Chief Brad, you could tell us that there's no drugs or tobacco products allowed at the shelter.
I don't know if there's anyone here to answer that for you, Frank.
It's a public place, why can't we get an answer?
Okay. Well, we do have a bylaw about smoking, that's about all I could answer, is that yes, you can't smoke in public places.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other que, can I, can they ask me questions, Madam Chair?
No, I think we're good.
Okay, good, and thanks, everybody, for coming and participating.
Thank you for that. Our next person on the list is Boyd Peardin.
It's been a long evening. I'd just like to start by saying, I'm hearing a lot of things to support the addicts, and that's a great thing, but I'm not hearing anything to support the residents of the area. Absolutely nothing has been said on that, other than they're going to hire four officers, but they can't stay there all the time. Anyway, I have many concerns about this injection site coming to PEI, or to Park Street, sorry. I'm not a great speaker, so you'll have to bear with me. These sites bring illegal drugs contrary to what they say their users, suppliers into the area, and all the related troubles that go with this activity. The management model to be used at this injection center has not worked at the outreach center and will not work here. It is a disaster waiting to happen. Only one has to look at how the outreach center has destroyed the neighborhood to see what will happen on Park Street. Houses for sale in the area are not selling. I wonder why. The safe injection site was not suitable for Belmont Street and is no more suitable one block away on Park Street. Please reject this application. Thank you.
Thank you, Boyd. And now we'll call on Shannon Courtney.
Firstly, I'd like to thank you for providing the opportunity to speak. It's the first time that this has been provided to us, the residents, in a public space, so bear with me, I have a few things to say. Just by way of introduction, I am Shannon, and I live on Fiddon Beach Street for eight years with my husband and my two cats. We love our house, we love the easy access to the downtown, and most importantly, that almost all of our beloved friends live within a 10-minute walking distance. We love our neighborhood, but in the past year, and especially this past summer, we have started to see our neighborhood changing, and not for the better. I will not get into all of those, you know, anecdotal notices, though the thing I wanted to talk about today is something my friend said to me, and we weren't even talking about this particular topic, we were talking about something else, but she said, she's relating a story about someone trying to do something good, but they were doing it in a not-good way, and that's what's happening here. You cannot try to do good things in bad ways. I am standing before you here today because the provincial government has failed in its duty to genuinely consult with community. Had they done so and crafted a plan based on input, feedback, and the real concerns of affected residents, my fears would likely have been alleviated, and I wouldn't be in the urgent need to vote against this variance. Consultation should have begun long before potential sites were even considered and involved all islanders and stakeholders as issues of addiction and homelessness are province-wide, not just at the outreach center and not just in downtown Charlottetown. It should have entailed open discourse, active listening, and addressing resident concerns. Health Canada's guidelines for establishing a safe consumption site emphasize the importance of such consultations and require applicants to provide a report outlining the consultation activities undertaken and measures to address concerns raised. A direct quote from these guidelines reads as follows, "We need to understand the efforts that have been made to engage with the community, to inform them of the proposal, and ensure that the voices of community members have been heard. Regrettably, the province has made no sincere efforts to inform the community," I did not receive any notice of a July 19th, for example, meeting, "listen to our voices or address real concerns. The OPS was first hinted at in March for Belmont, but was overturned during the election. Then they hosted one information session about the proposed, I call imposed, plans for Park Street in July with minimal notice and no community outreach. I have been to many community meetings on many issues. I am well-versed and actually have training how to create a space for genuine productive conversations. This meeting did not meet any of those criteria. It was clear that the government had already made its decisions regarding the OPS location, operation, and management. It was a check-the-box exercise rather than genuine community consultation and a one-off at that. The government has not engaged with community or a city at the planning stage, therefore we cannot trust them to show up and address issues that are to arise after this OPS opens. Next on the docket, they are planning to move the outreach center to Park Street as well, and as we discussed, make it a permanent, a permanent wraparound services here. I have zero faith that we'll be engaged in any legitimate way by the provincial government. This pattern of complete disregard for proper community engagement has to stop. They've used the same playbook when establishing the outreach center at Euston as well as the homeless shelter last year, and I'm sure in other regards I'm not aware of. I appreciate that your city staff has identified a number of important resources and supports needed for the OPS to be approved by council in their report. It is nevertheless unacceptable that the province itself did not identify and commit these needed supports through community consultation. I ask you to consider the grave implications. If the government believes it can get away with sidestepping its responsibility to consult with community, it will continue to do so. Everyone stands to lose when islanders and stakeholders are not engaged on plans and policies directly and seriously impacting them. Today it's the OPS, and tomorrow it's something else that affects Sherwood, West Royalty, or maybe even Brighton, who knows? The anger and frustration circulating over the past couple of months is simply a byproduct of our real fears. We are afraid because we have been abandoned by our government leaders. I'm not speaking to the people in this room, I'm speaking to the provincial government. We are afraid because we are bearing witness to things we have never seen before in our neighborhoods. We are afraid for our safety and that of our neighbors, for the young, like my friend's baby, and the old. We are afraid because we don't know who we will turn to when our sense of safety and peace is threatened. We feel like collateral damage. I understand that drug addiction is a complex issue. I very much am, you know, aligned with my friends Patrick and Matthew on this. I believe there is a need for an OPS as part of a holistic, well-funded addictions and mental health service program. I do not believe that the government has acted in good faith with respect to planning for the OPS, and we see the same with respect to their temporary housing shelter and the lack of even the Tab sprinklers in it. And my major concerns, I've already outlined in the letter to your committee, but I will restate them very shortly here, very short span of here, a complete lack of community consultation is my biggest issue. Mixing the homeless and user addiction populations, I'm not sure if that's safe. An OPS should be a non-sophisticated building offering other medical services to afford privacy and dignity to users. The OPS should serve the entire province, not just downtown Charlottetown, therefore this whole 15- to 20-minute walk will access, I'm not sure that that really makes a difference when you are not going to be serving anyone in Semerside, Montevue, or other areas where there are indeed people with addictions that need to be served. I have not seen a great commitment by the province with regards to resources, keep surrounding neighborhoods clean of debris, needles, et cetera, and I do question placing services on a toxic site, a parking lot, I feel that shows a, shows a great lack of care for the vulnerable population. The idea of a mobile unit is certainly something I would support, as well as the, many people have suggested the Sherwood Home, which offers plenty of green space, peace, and quiet, and would be a great potential location for wraparound services for a vulnerable population with regular transport connections that could connect to and from communities across PEI and to the city's core. So that's one suggestion I would have supported if I'd been engaged by the provincial government to share my thoughts, but I wasn't invited to do so, and no one was. Thank you for listening. Please do the right thing and assist that the provincial government properly consult with islanders before proceeding with the establishment of an OPS in any location.
Thank you. Thank you, Shannon, for that. We have Scott McEwen on the list. Is he here? He didn't check in, so I just want to make sure. Okay, if he does show up, we'll go back to him. The next person is Vaughn Davies.
Thank you once again, Madam Chair, for this opportunity, and if I could say, in such a formal setting, and such a serious issue, if we can't have these presenters appearing in person, that was disgraceful, not acceptable, in my view. I'm Vaughn Davies, and my wife and I are tax-paying residents, Escher Street, and we're in the area of influence. We're opposed in the strongest possible terms to any variance, temporary whatsoever, in this overdose prevention site, and any of my neighbors I talk to, none of them are in favor of it either. And I heard a letter says support, well, I look forward to reviewing this package a little later. I'm looking at how many of those letters of support you received are actually within the area of influence. The reason we're opposed to this is very simple. We've seen a whole new level of drug dealing, drug use, used needles, theft, violence, threats, and generally crime, and again, the city's own stats reflect this, and all of which we feel is pretty much directly related to drug dealing and drug use, all of it illegal. When it comes to threats, we have lived it. We've seen needles discarded in the city property just behind us. We've seen folks prowling in the neighbor's yard, got a video of it, just last Saturday morning, Sunday morning, 9:30, we were watering our flowers, and then the driveway, what comes home? Two police vehicles. Four policemen pile out and take a person off the sidewalk and take him away, Sunday morning, 9:30. I don't know if they're arrested or not, but I mean, you wouldn't put a person in a police vehicle, I guess, if they weren't under arrest. Don't know much about that stuff, never been arrested. This variance again, one year, that is nonsense. I don't like you use the phrase, but once you get it there, you'll never get rid of it, and it just, next year it's going to be the exact same thing. You know, where is the long-term plan for this? I heard the previous speaker there from the province has put a plan, somebody asked him, yeah, there is no plan, and nobody's working on one, and they just figure they'll come down here and appear before committee again next year, and there'll be rubber stamp for another year, and they'll go and collect their paycheck. You know, you got to put in place a proper plan. That's what we, that's what we'd be in favor of. You look at alcohol, you look at the treatment center, it's out in the middle, you know, across from Stratford, you know, in an isolated area, so it used to be isolated, you know, that's the type of thing that's needed. I heard tonight, going to get six more police officers, well, that's definitely needed, but that right there tells you the problem, probably should be 12. We feel, you know, this overdose prevention site in the neighborhood where we are, it just enables the drug dealer, condones drug use, crime and violence going to continue. There's no place for any of this in a residential area. And you know, I just thought, you know, the city had no problem shutting down Hell's Angels a couple of years ago, four years ago, five years ago, and you know, you didn't see any drug dealing around there, or anybody shooting up in front of it, so I mean, if the city can shut down the Hells Angels, shouldn't be too tough to look after this. And you know, there's petty, petty, petty drug dealers. Safe injection sites, they just ruin communities. So again, you know, the city's at a crossroads. The committee, you know, has a choice, the drug dealer and crime, or the tax-paying residents, you know, trying to do the right thing, pay their taxes, build equity in their home. You know, I heard a count at the meeting the other night, now we're getting a drug box, dope needle box down at Jogi's Park, just right down the end of our street. Now, it's unreal. Yeah, that's about all I have. No, we're totally opposed to any of this stuff, and like I said, I haven't really talked to any residents. Residents is what I care about. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Vaughn, and I did just want to let you know, Vaughn, that the, the two applicants were invited to be here in person, but it was by their choice that they chose not to be here. Okay, we have one more person on the list, and that is Sean McAldef?
Macaldef.
Macaldef.
Sean Macaldef.
Of course.
Burtwood Street.
I'm sorry. Macaldef, all right.
I'm depending on speaking, so I'm going to come up anyway. Apologize for the appearance for such a reason. You can see on my jacket, it's PEIFOA, which is Football Officials Association, and the football field's across the street from my house, basically, I can walk through, you know, it's right there. Anyway, I looked around the other day, there's no benches, there's no benches for anyone to sit on to change their cleats. Like, that's obviously coming from not being able to put them out there for, for whatever various reasons, nefarious reasons. I will say, I'd like to stop people using the word OPS, it's just an acronym, and it's so far gone from what it really is, which is an illegal drug injection site. I think that's what we need to get back to telling the public what it really is. I know that's not really what you guys... Anyway, I'm asking for someone else as well. Where are the illegal drugs coming from? And if there are gift cards being provided to the adventure group who provides them to those people, when those sources dry up, what happens when the... to those people, when those sources dry up, what happens when they don't have that money to get their fix? Anyway, that's not really for you guys as well. I'm just going to go off an email that was sent out earlier in this group I'm in as they... I didn't have anything prepared, so. All right. How can we tackle addictions with so many resources we already can place? Services such as addictions extended care residences, addictions intense day programs, addiction services, walk-in clinics, community addiction services, gambling addiction services, harm reduction services and supports, help for addiction substance use, mental health programs and services, needle exchange program and noxalone kits, opioid replacement therapy program, provincial addictions treatment therapy, quitting smoking, substance use harm reduction program, transition unit, withdrawal management programs, youth and family addiction services. So how many more things do we need to pile on? Like, how much more money do we need to keep throwing at the same thing where they're now creating four and five more jobs for people who know somebody who, you know, we have a person running this outreach center with zero, I assume she has no credibility of what she does, but she pays herself a hundred grand a year, a tenth of what is the budget of the entire outreach center. So you're just going to transfer all this down to Park Street? As this guy said, it's no different. It's a street away from Belmont, and now it's just, it's going to grow out. And people have talked about, they're going to fence those two streets off. Well, you're still going to funnel people up, Fitzroy, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. If you're on this board, I really, I hope you don't push it ahead to put it on the council because then the councils have... There's other factors that come in for their influences, right? They want to get reelected, and they want to look nice. But it's us taxpayers that are really paying the price here. I feel like we're the ones that are kind of been told, you know, stiff upper lip and just keep pushing forward. Well, how many more years is that we're going to put up with? Especially if they're being enabled, if the drug users are being enabled, why would you want to change that if you were an addict? You know, if you're being sheltered and then driven up to the OPS, given breakfast, a shower, go grab a gift card, and then go grab your need of whatever choice it is, and then you just walk back on to the OPS, and you're, that's your day. Why would you... There's no recourse to stop that. And I guess I've seen with most people that know addictions in your family, it's only two ways. It's rock bottom and you get clean, or it's rock bottom and you're dead. So I don't see how furthering it on, you know, you're giving people two years to die instead of six months. Like, you're still feeding them the addiction. The addictions are still being fed, so that's where, in my opinion, is that's where we need to just come up with something better than just giving people needles and free drugs all the time. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Okay, so that was everybody that had registered to speak. If there's nobody else, I'm going to turn it over to our board members. And Sean, I might point out to you that regardless of what happens here tonight, it does have to go along to council does make the final decision. Yeah, so this is just a recommending board, so it still goes to council regardless of what the outcome is tonight. Okay? Okay. So any board members? Okay, go ahead, Counselor McKay.
Thank you, and thank you for everyone for taking the time to speak. You kind of knocked off, I had 100 points, and now I'm down to 10. So that's, I appreciate, because I had a lot of questions. And Sean, I think my first one, a lot of them will be directed to you and your coworker. My first question is, why is the OPS site, which we know is dealing with the crisis in addictions and mental health, kind of co-related, not a government...
Yeah, thank you for your question. So when we were doing the research to design the program, we spoke with provincial governments and provincial and territorial health authorities across the country, and then we spoke with operators of the services. And in almost every case, it was non-governmental organizations who were operators. Few reasons for that. One is, it is oftentimes those community-based organizations that have subject matter expertise. And then another key point, and this is probably the most important point, community-based harm reduction service providers already have relationships with the people who they serve, with the people who, you know, experience some of the most severe substance use disorders. So they're going to have the easiest time engaging people in services. And I can say that as a former regulated health professional and clinician, who did their best to engage people with some of the most severe needs, but because I had that regulated healthcare professional designation, I didn't have that established relationship that a community-based nonprofit service provider would have with that harm reduction expertise, I wasn't going to have as much success as the subject matter expert. So it was based on that, speaking with folks across the country and determining what the better models had been for engaging people.
Okay, I'm going to follow up on that. And I'm not questioning the expertise. Most of the reading and research I've done on overdose prevention sites indicate that they, you know, that you're right, their health authorities are managing, managers in cooperation with community partners. But at those sites, they also have people who are trained professionally in medical and counseling services. They have ability to refer to substance use treatment, and I'm assuming when people are in, and you know yourself, the window's pretty small. When it opens, people want to get through it. They don't want to wait for three weeks to access service. And we heard tonight how many services are being offered already. And again, we know there's lots of opportunity, but it's the access to those services that are making things really challenging, I think. I look at the services that you guys, in the report, it says they're going to provide housing support. That's duplicate a service based on the last application we just heard. They talked about moving people from temporary into permanent housing and stuff, so that one probably can come off. And I guess I'm wondering, with your community partners, your Piers Alliance, are they trained medically in counseling services to run this?
Yeah, thank you, yeah. So I'll address both parts. In the what we heard report, I believe it refers to referring, connecting people to housing services. Can always double-check the wording, but that is the case in the service delivery model, is that people would be referred, and by refer, I mean a hands-on referral, in some cases sitting with the person when completing the referral. So that's what the connection to housing supports looks like, because we want to work with existing services instead of avoiding duplication. And with respect to overdose response, so all OPS staff will be required to complete advanced overdose response, and that is provided by local training organizations. And it's a step beyond the typical overdose response training. And then for additional supports, be that counseling and therapy, be that primary care, we have a service coordination working group, where we have folks from regulated health professionals and other service providers. And the goal of that group is to set out clear referral pathways so that we know how best to connect people to services when that window of opportunity opens. When that person who wouldn't come to the clinics I ever worked in is sitting with one of the OPS staff and says, you know what, I'm sick and tired of being sick and tired, I want to go again. And so that's why we have the service coordination working group, and also to invite regulated health professionals into the OPS to work with clients. So there's designated office space in the OPS floor plans to accommodate that, and we look forward to firming that up. Of course, as with any area of healthcare, human resource limitations are a challenge, but we've built the space. We have the service coordination working group, and that's how we want to make those connections.
And, I mean, you're very familiar, but just so I can state it publicly, addiction services is a volunteer service, right? So if clients are going to access the OPS site, they're probably going to safely inject their drug supervised to make sure that they don't overdose. So are they actually in the right state to, at that place, look for access to service? I'm just trying to get clarity around this at 8 o'clock at night, so. When you state that the increase in mental health and addiction services happens at the outreach site?
Yeah, so that's an important question. Really important to note that with most clients, not all, but most clients who would access an overdose prevention site, we're looking at severe and chronic substance use disorders. So basically, what that means is consuming three times a day or more. And so a person, generally speaking, is not getting high or euphoric for the most part. The function of the substance use is to stave off withdrawal, so a person doesn't go into some pretty debilitating withdrawal. So because of that, you know, there's always exceptions, but generally, people can have good conversations. The staff, trained staff, can have good engagement and, in some cases, referral conversations with the clients who are at the OPS post-consumption, where they're being monitored. And I've observed that myself when visiting overdose prevention sites.
And my last point, and I, well, I think. So you also, I struggle, and I've heard lots of good points here tonight, I'm struggling with the two facilities being in the same site, primarily because I'm assuming not everybody at the temporary shelters that just passed to go to council for approval are, would be the, all using the services offered at the OPS site. And I know they're two separate distinct services, but it's pretty close in proximity. So if you have someone who uses the shelters during recovery, and, you know, it's put in a lot of complex issues in one area together. Heard some neat solutions to that. But my last point, do you think, and we know that you said, someone said the outreach center is not a safe injection site, we know that, but there's lots of injecting happening at the outreach center. So do you think that clients will actually leave the outreach center, go to Park Street to use the safe injection site, to go back to the outreach center? I'm just wondering, because I'm just not seeing that happening.
Right, well, the overdose prevention site doesn't exist, so we can't say it yet. But to the question, the public substance use happening right now, outdoors, largely unsupervised, sometimes in public spaces, sometimes on private property, it's not working for anyone. It's not working for anyone. And so when we provide a indoor, enclosed, supervised environment where people can access other supports, that is going to bring clients to the center. For, you know, some clients, it'll take some outreach, it'll take some conversations, encouraging people to come. But it's also important to note that, as per Health Canada's exemption, once you have an overdose prevention site open, it's a little more appropriate to say that, okay, the exemption applies here at the overdose prevention site. This is where you access the service, because we want to reduce public substance use. That is after the public health benefits, that is another benefit.
I'll just add in, it's a good question, Counselor, and we did do some engagement in 2022 with people with lived and living experience to survey them about their substance use and whether they would use the services that would be offered at an overdose prevention site. All of the, and this is a publicly available report, but just in summary, all of the individuals who responded said that they did use substances in a public space in the previous six months. And over, more than half stated they would go to an OPS at least once a day. And the reasons that they cited for going to an OPS were, so I don't die, and to reduce the risk with the increasing toxic drug supply. So we do have some feedback from citizens in Sherlotown who are using drugs about their desires and about their willingness to use an overdose prevention site.
Madam Chair, just a point of order. I think we have to vote on an extension. It's in our procedural bylaw. We're over three hours, so...
Yep, so we're 8 o'clock. Can I ask the board to...
I move.
Can't move by his...
She can move on second.
Second and by... Yep, okay, so we'll keep on going. Thank you.
I guess, don't we have to vote?
Yes.
All those in favor? Okay, good stuff. Julie, were you planning to, Counselor McKay, were you planning to respond to their comments? Or... Because if not, I was just going to say, somebody, they referred to the survey that was down in 2022. Was that the survey that the people that participated got paid to be in it? They all got a grocery gift card or something like that? Is that the one? I just remember hearing about it at the merchandising center.
Yeah, let's clarify that point. So anytime research, anytime engagement happens, anytime, for example, we survey seniors on which activities they'd like to see take place in their community, when we ask for people's time, and when we ask for their expertise, they are compensated. And that's just something that folks do when they do research and focus groups. And there's no reason that that should be any different for people with health issues, like a substance use disorder. And so folks were compensated with a gift card, I think it was between $10 and $20. And we absolutely needed their lived experiences, because for whatever I've lived, I've not walked a mile in their shoes. Many of us have not. And so we needed their expertise, and then we followed best practices like we would any other study, by reimbursing people for their time and their expertise, in this case in the form of a grocery card for food.
Perfect. Thank you so much for that clarification. I appreciate that. I just have one other question before I turn it back over to the rest of the folks. If Piers Alliance ran the OPS down at the proposed location that you're proposing, would they be no longer doing the work that they're doing out of the outreach center?
That would be more of an operational decision for Piers Alliance. I know that some staff will make the transition to the OPS. The, so really what we want to do is, when we expand services, given the opportunity to include an OPS, that to work with the operator to avoid duplication, but then at the same time, not create any service gaps. So the short answer is, the services will be streamlined if it's a new additional service that would take place at the OPS.
Right, okay. Because presently now, I know that you can go to the outreach center and you can pick up your drug paraphernalia there at the outreach center. So I just thought that if you were going to have an OPS, you'd be able to fetch that stuff in the same location.
And I just want to be clear, drug paraphernalia does not include substances. It doesn't include drugs.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Go ahead, Zin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to emphasize that, you know, it's a city's planning board, and, you know, we are limited to the planning aspect. You know, I'm not a health committee, I'm not a social development committee, you know, I'm not going to comment on the, you know, overdose, whether it's a good idea or not a good idea. And I know Sean, thanks for the presentation, you know, gave facts and figures, and that facts and figures were challenged by one of the members from the public. So I'm not getting into that, which researcher, whose statement is the real fact. I'm sure everyone has done their due diligence here. And so for us, as a committee, as a board, I am more interested in the site, in the land use aspect of the overdose prevention site. So for me, what is not clear is, and where I'm struggling again, and this goes back to the previous application, that temporary aspect of it. You are applying for a temporary use. I am not sure whether this temporary use is going to remain temporary, or its character will change into permanent. So that is what was missing in the presentation. You know, the province is not, you know, at least to my satisfaction, clearly stated that, you know, what is the temporary, and beyond the temporary, what are the, you know, the plans? If you put a structure there, and there is another, and people who are addicted, and yes, we want, we don't want people to die because of overdose, and if people do come there to this particular site, is there any, you know, can the province confirm that the people will not come back to that site post this temporary use permit is revoked? Because as the planners stated before this board, that this is temporary use, and beyond which, it would require the city to actually go through the process of changing the bylaws and the plans. And hence, I want to make sure that, you know, if we do allow... And in the, and hence, I want to make sure that, you know, if we do allow for this temporary variance, that it is not actually getting into a permanent, you know, thing, because that is what, which has been advised by the city staff, that this is not permanent, and nor the province should anticipate, you know, another, you know, uh, extra, another extension beyond this temporary extension of a year. Um, if the province is anticipating, say like, well, they will, um, if, let's say this variance is allowed, and a year later, if, uh, the same application comes back, I think it, it becomes, uh, a, a cycle, it's going on and again, there is no permanent solution to this. So I would, um, emphasize on the temporary nature and actually on the land use aspect of it.
Thank you, thank you for that. And for us here this evening, we look at land use and we look at community impact. And so I appreciate, um, you, Sin, for pointing out some of that land use. Is there anybody else? Uh, go ahead, Counselor Beck.
Yeah, um, I guess I have a couple, a couple of questions. The first question I have is, uh, I do know that under the contract that was put in place for the community outreach center with the adventure group, there was supposed to be an ongoing, uh, report that was to be presented, I'm not sure where that ended up or to who that got presented, or even if it did get presented. So, um, I guess what I'm wondering here, you mentioned in the, on the left-hand side, the next steps part about the six-plus months of the ongoing evaluation of operational parks, street services. Um, I'm wondering if you could comment, Sean, what that would look like? How's the evaluation done? What sort of benchmarks are you looking at? And who would that be report be made to? And would the city be, uh, have access to that information? If we are looking at this as a temporary, um, permit being invoked, uh, I would like a little bit of clarity around the evaluation process, who conducts it, what's it look like, and where does that reporting go to?
Sure, yes, yeah, thank you, Counselor Beck. Uh, so, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll tackle evaluation and then we'll tackle performance monitoring, um, both of which are, uh, are, uh, will take place. Um, on evaluation, um, for who? Um, uh, that it's best practice generally to have a third-party evaluator, so a, uh, third-party evaluator would be hired to do a, a formal evaluation. Um, I anticipate that it'll be what's called a process and outcome evaluation. What that means is, um, was the service implemented as designed, that's process, then outcome is, did it achieve the outcome and outputs desired? Uh, and then, so what might be some of the, uh, metrics, uh, going in, going into that? That's probably a good segue to, um, the, the regular performance monitoring. So the Health Canada requires quarterly reporting, and, uh, and, and so we'll be requesting that, we'll be getting it. And, uh, and we've added a few additional metrics as well. So some examples would be, um, number of overdose responses, number of drug checks and anonymous results, number of referrals to external services, basic client demographics, um, if EMS had to be called, there will be other metrics, but that's just a sampling. So two buckets, evaluation done at the end of year one, and then, uh, quarterly performance monitoring, uh, for a more real-time, uh, view on, uh, service delivery.
And who gets that information?
Being available, it will be available, the information will be publicly available in terms of the types of drugs, um, that have been checked, the number of clients, um, serviced at this site. So it, it's, it will be publicly available.
How would I access that?
Typically, they're posted online. Um, you know, oftentimes we'll post what we heard, engagement reports on the Harm Reduction Services and Supports website.
Through what, through where? Where do I go?
Oh, that'd be, so the government of Prince Edward Island, it's, you know, to be determined, oftentimes we'll make stakeholders aware when, when we put a report online, in this case, let's say, an evaluation report, but, uh, um, the most likely place, if I had to guess today, I'd say would be the Harm Reduction Services and Support, uh, webpage, and that is a government of Prince Edward Island webpage.
Okay. I have a question there, we've heard a lot about, um, community engagement and, um, consultation. Um, when you were talking on page, I'm gonna find the page, your page three, under your background and introduction, you were talking about the intent to establish an advisory committee with community partners to determine original, additional wraparound services for clients to best meet their needs. Who are you referring to when you're, when you're talking about establishing a committee with community partners? Who are you targeting to engage on that, uh, as part of that committee?
Mm-hmm, yeah, I'll, I'll just check in, would that have been in, um, the Housing, Land and Communities PowerPoint? Cause I, I think I know what you're referring to there.
It's on the, uh, it's on the Park Street expansion information that you had, it's in part of a background.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, yes, perfect, okay, yeah, yeah, so the, the what we heard report. Yeah, so, uh, basically, a community committee would be formed to, uh, inform the development of those wraparound services. Um, the final list, I don't think it's been finalized yet, uh, it'll depend on next steps, which, uh, I think Jason Doyle from Housing outlined in terms of environmental assessment, et cetera. But, you know, typically, uh, having, um, been a part of community committees in the past, usually you include, uh, service providers, you include relevant government departments, you include, um, uh, different levels of government, uh, you include community members, you include people with lived and living experience. So the final list is, is, uh, I don't think that's been finalized, that'll depend on next steps, but that's, uh, generally what a community committee looks like.
Yeah, I guess that concerns me. Um, I, I would think that we probably, if we're looking at this as coming down the road, I, I would have expected that would have been in place. Um, I guess I would add further to that, that, um, hearing from what we've heard from the, uh, letters we've received and the information that we have gotten, that, um, community, especially the localized community is, is extremely important in terms of, uh, being able to provide their ongoing, kind of tagging on to what Jackie had said earlier about the ongoing part, about the, uh, regular involvement and meaningful connection to it. So I would, I would certainly be in support of that if this were to go ahead, uh, and were to be agreed upon. Um, I gotta admit, I'm, I'm gonna be honest with you, I've, I've, I'm, uh, I'm not a hundred percent dialed in on all this, uh, and, um, I, I think it's important that, um, I know it will go to council regardless of what the decision is, but this isn't just a planning board situation, and I think it's important that we hear further from all members of our council on this and as we, as we make this important decision. So, um, you know, we, we'll be moving it on, but I, I think there's, uh, some convincing that may have to be done between now and then, and, um, hopefully we can come up with the right answer for, for this, but, um, anyway, uh, I think it's, uh, I think we've heard some important information here this evening from, from residents and from, uh, from, from yourself as well too, so I thank you for that, and, uh, hopefully we can come up with the right solution here for this property.
Thank you, Counselor Beck. Is there any other, go ahead, Sin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, so this is a question for Sean and, and his coworker. Have you done any study or suggesting that these two sites, you know, this application, the overdose prevention site can actually coexist with the, uh, temporary emergen- shelter in the same, because we are talking about the same, you know, parcel of land? Um, and because in my opinion, assuming that, you know, it, it would not impact each other, or people who want emergency shelters and who are not addicted to drugs, uh, or, you know, want to use the site would not be, um, I'm, I'm still wrapping my head around it, like, you know, what are the rationale behind having the two things in the same spot? Is it just purely financial and availability of land, or is it really a thought-through process, um, where you actually have done a study and said, like, listen, these two sites can actually work in the same piece of land, or in the same site?
Yeah, no, uh, uh, thank you, I appreciate that question. Um, it is based on the fact that, uh, low-barrier shelters, uh, complement, uh, addiction services, is the short answer, and I'll, I'll explain what I mean by that. So the Park Street Emergency Shelter, it is a low-barrier shelter, and that means, uh, there is greater flexibility for people, uh, who have, uh, substance use disorders or addiction, and therefore who use substances. Um, and so, uh, that means that certainly not all, but a, uh, proportion of clients at, uh, um, the Park Street Emergency Shelter, uh, may have a substance use disorder. Again, not everyone. So, uh, we see in other jurisdictions, uh, co-location of low-barrier shelters intended for people who, uh, are, are just not doing well enough to, uh, stay in a shelter that is not low-barrier. In other words, if people don't have low-barrier shelter options, they end up on the street. So that is why, uh, there are complimentary services, uh, to have a, uh, a service focused on substance use disorders and then a low-barrier shelter. Now, I want to know, because I did say that, uh, not, certainly not every client at the Park Street Emergency Shelter, um, uh, uh, would have a substance use disorder, I want to be a hundred percent clear on that. Homelessness could occur to anyone, um, I think we're seeing that. Um, so that is why, uh, the, uh, we've added the perimeter fencing, that is why the operations of the two services are going to be distinct, uh, and that is why there already is, but there will continue to be really tight collaboration between the two service providers, uh, the Park Street Emergency Shelter and, uh, the overdose prevention site.
Thanks, Sean, and, and I appreciate your, your clarification on that. But, you know, these two, uh, applications are so interlinked that, uh, you know, and both are temporary, so at the end of the permit, you know, you understand that's, there is condition that you cannot, you know, we would not be approving for another year extension. So, you know, in between your permanent solution, and I'm not, you know, suggesting what the provincial government should do or shouldn't do, um, how would you operate emergency shelters and overdose prevention type, that's really up to you. But, um, but we also want to, because in the previous application, I kind of had the feeling that there is an intention to make the temporary into permanent, and, and I'm just wondering if that is your intention as well? And if that is your intention, then I need to ask, uh, the planner or request the planner to reiterate what she, she mentioned in her opening statement regarding, um, the temporary nature and, you know, the process that needs to follow after, uh, you know, for a permanent application.
Sean? And, and so, yeah, yeah, okay, uh, so the short answer is the, the, uh, temporary permit with respect to the overdose prevention site, that is based on the urgency of the situation, we talked about rising overdoses and fentanyl entering, uh, the illicit drug supply, uh, and, uh, then the time required to, uh, complete the next steps, uh, whether that's the environmental assessment or, uh, uh, some of the, um, uh, 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 planning-related steps that would need to take place, whether it's related to the CDA zone and, and the steps that, uh, um, the planning staff outlined. Um, so, uh, that is the basis for the temporary, uh, uh, use and the permit for temporary use, it is the urgency of the situation and then the time required for the, uh, following steps.
Thanks, Sean, and, but again, what you are saying is that when you mentioned about the environmental impact assessment and the planning, you are talking about this particular site, right?
Yes, because that'll determine.
So you have an intention to make this site as a permanent site, right?
That is not what I am saying, to be clear, uh, because that will shape the options moving forward, that will shape the option.
So this environment, so.
Yeah, it, it, I'll, I'll just clarify, Sin, that.
Yeah.
We are here as, uh, nonpartisan civil servants, so we implement, uh, and, uh, we serve the public, uh, but we would not be in a position to make that kind of decision.
No, 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 absolutely, and I'm not, um, at all, you know, asking, I, I understand and respect the nonpartisanship, and, and this is a question to the civil service, when I, I'm questioning you, I'm questioning the government as you are representing, uh, as an applicant, if, you know, whether, because you mentioned about the environmental impact assessment and you clearly mentioned about the, um, you know, you know, other planning aspects that you have to look at, I'm just asking you, is this the one? Or if it is not in your knowledge, or you are not clear about whether there is an intention to reapply for this as permanent site, um, then you can simply say that you have no knowledge, and we will respect that. Uh, my whole point is just, I am not convinced about the temporary nature. It is temporary, but beyond, towards the end of the permit, what comes next? If it comes back to this board, um, that we are, you know, applying for a permanent structure or a permanent overdose prevention site in that, then obviously it will have to go through the proper process. Um, all I want to say is, uh, when I say temporary, um, you know, the languages are important here, um, you know, it's not just temporary as a structure, this is temporary use of the land, um, because as I, you know, as I mentioned earlier, we are really looking at the land use aspect here. So I hope you understand, you know, um, my points, thanks.
Are you waiting for a response from Sean?
No, thank you, um, no, that was just a statement.
Okay, all right, Jackie?
Thank you, um, I'll try and make this quick, I think that most of my questions are probably directed at planning staff. Um, I'm wondering, um, just in trying to understand, uh, looking at the bylaw for a major variance, would you consider this application either a community-based service or a public amenity?
Um, through the chair, I would, my assumption, and I'm not first in this type of healthcare, but I believe this is a, a community-based service, um, rather than an amenity, I mean, it is a health crisis, um, but, I mean, I, I'm not experienced in that area to really comment, but that's my, my very basic knowledge of what this is.
Okay. Um, one other question was, I was wondering if there are other ways in which you see this application meeting the intent and purpose of the official plan? Like in the last application, it was social housing, I was wondering if there's, uh, anything that, uh, staff considered to be meeting the intent in this application?
Um, we looked at the official plan and, um, we looked at the health, um, section, the, the, the section in the official plan that covered health services, and, um, the official plan didn't explicitly say, I mean, it doesn't talk to overdose prevention sites, but it talks to health services within the community, and that's where they say that various health-based services requires community engagement and, um, input from all levels of government. So I think what they were doing when they were preparing the official plan is, it's not, it's not easy to cover every type of health service, um, when you're dealing with a document like that, because it's a very broad document, but they left it open that if, um, there were services that came up, um, in, in the health field that would serve the community, then that gave the opportunity for public, public consultation.
Okay.
And stakeholder engagement.
Thank you so much, I, uh, one last question, is I was wondering why in the recommendation for this application, um, it doesn't include the component of not to exceed one year? Um, in the last application, it said that we could approve it, but this period cannot exceed one year, and then here we are sitting a year later, trying to reapprove something that in this application, we're saying, oh, it's temporary, it's only one, it's only a one-year variance? Is there an opportunity to include that aspect into the recommendation? Or, I'm just wondering how we can avoid getting to this position again in a year's time, maybe in a similar position as we're dealing with, with the temporary shelters?
It is for one year, and I discussed that in the body of the report. I, it does say at, um, where it talks about police officers represents a 20-minute walking radius around the boundary of the subject property for a period of one year from the date of the building permit issuance. And then I believe I also talked, um, just let me see. I will have to confirm that, but it, it is supposed to be for one year.
It's recommendation number-
Oh, yes.
Number six-
Okay.
That it is included that an extension of the temporary use, major variance approval shall be prohibited.
Okay, excuse me, I didn't see that. That's perfect. Thank you so much. That's all my questions.
Okay, Counselor Beck?
Yeah, just, I, I forgot one question earlier. Sean, maybe you can, um, enlighten us here a little bit. I know we've had the option, the option of the mobile unit has been put forth. I don't know what the mobile unit is, how it would work, or what benefit it may or may not be able to provide. Can you maybe elaborate or for us, or give us a little bit of an information as to what a mobile unit would be, and is it an option? Is it something that we could be looking at as a consideration? Or is it kind of a temporary one-year OPS site or, or nothing? Like, I don't know. I'm just thinking, I'm just looking at all, all possibilities. There's some parts of that that I do find intriguing, but maybe if you could tell us a little bit about how that works and whether that could be an option for us?
It's, you know what, Counselor Beck, that's a great question. I, I think that we have to stick to the application because that isn't the application. I'm pretty sure. Now, not to put you on the spot, CAO Mohammed, but could you clarify for me?
But I-
Thank you, Chair. So what's for consideration today is what's actually included in the application, not alternative services, not who's the manager of the facility or the services provided. It's, it's strictly what's being considered here is the land use and the land use impacts of this type of facility around it. So in some cases, you've seen, we know some of the impacts have been trespassing and illegal activities, so therefore, in the conditions, you can see that there's an increase in police officers to address those impacts has been conditioned into that. So just to clarify, what the planning board considers is strictly the land use and the impacts of this land use surrounding that. The other bigger, broader details is something that council will consider once planning board has made a recommendation to council.
So that could be asked at that time?
I, I need some clarity on your, your previous, David and Laurel, you'd be able to answer that, if the province is presenting in front of council or not with, to answer questions like that when it goes to council?
The short answer to that, I think the direction that Counselor Beck is going is that, it's been said several times tonight, that the job of the planning board is to consider land use, good land use, planning principles, and community impact is certainly one significant part of that. Once you stray beyond that, you're getting into an area that really is not relevant to the application that's before us this evening. And, you know, I think that there's been a good deal of the discussion, it's, it's interesting discussion, but it's not specifically related to what your mandate is. And when you step outside your mandate, if we ever end up in Iraq for some reason, you're going to get thumped. They're going to say, you weren't here to decide whether the province should have applied for a mobile clinic. They've applied for something else. Do you approve it or don't you approve it for recommendation to council? So, you know, I would just stress that the importance of sticking to our knitting and not straying outside the application, four corners of the application itself.
Thank you for that clarification. Counselor McKay?
Good. I'm glad that we're on to that, because when I, I think I was clarified, but when I look at, this is a temporary variance, so it's not technically a development, but when you look at 3.39, Section E, where it talks about a development being detrimental to the convenience, health, or safety of the occupants or residents in the vicinity or general public. To me, that's community impact that we've been hearing all along, even though this isn't a development. It's a temporary use for a year, which people are going to be using. Can that fall under that subsection?
In, in the sense you use it, I mean, community impact is pretty broad in scope, right? But, but it's got to also be tied to land use planning and good planning principles. Is it good planning to grant the province a one-year temporary overdose prevention site at Park Street? Is that, does that make good planning sense? You have a recommendation from staff that it does, subject to certain conditions being met. So that's what you're dealing with.
Okay, thank you. If there's no other questions from the board-
Yes, Madam Chair.
Oh, Count, oh, go ahead, Your Worship.
Just to follow up what David is saying about the planning issue. We talked about another issue in the previous application about short-term, midterm, long-term planning. And this is short-term. This application is about short-term, and we're looking for long, midterm, long-term planning. And I think the residents and others have made it quite clear. Do we consolidate services in an area, whether it's near a tank farm, or whether it's near a service station, or it's near a, a island fertilizer? The question is, long-term is what we need, because this situation that we are referring to, this opiate crisis, needs no more short-term. It needs long-term, midterm, long-term. So that's why I'm having difficulty with this application. And Laura, I, Laura, I, I, I respect all the work you've done in this file, the same with, with, with Sean and Aaron, but this has gone on for a long time. I recall being at the February 8th meeting at the Merchandising Centre. It was a public consultation. No, it was a public forum. That's all, that's all that's required in the OPS application, is a public forum. This is a public consultation. You're allowing people to give their input, whether it's through writing, through speaking, or emailing and so forth. So, and Sean, you were there, and so was the counselor from the area, Justin Mertur, and the deputy mayor, you were there. And I was there in the evening meeting, and the frustration that no one could participate was explosive. And then March 8th, we had the meeting at Bertrand Junior High. And then the issue was politicized because a promise was made. A promise was made that the premier said, there are good decisions and there are bad decisions. This is a bad decision. And the crowd went up and raised their hands, and we're all happy. So that was March 8th. So it was politicized. Like, this, this, this is, this is a critical problem. And David, the land use issue is very important there, but it's said over and over again, is this the long-term solution at this site? And then July 19th, I liked the report on page 24, what happened? Well, if you were there, you saw what happened. It was not 25 seconds into the meeting, it was total eruption, and it continued. And what any viewers saw on Twitter or Facebook was only a short frame of that whole night. Anyone that was there, it was frightening. And it was a hot night, 90 degrees Fahrenheit. You could cut the tension with a butter knife. That's how bad it was. And I remember, Madam Chair, when we met with government, we said, you do not hold meetings in the summertime for climatic, climatic reasons, vacations and so forth. Meeting went ahead. So, yeah, I know what happened. I was there, and so was part of my family. Then Bertrand Junior High, we had our chief of police put on a community police action plan meeting on September 5th. Open mic, had the opportunity for anyone to give their, you know, their, their, their opinion. And, you know, to, to the credit of the chief, I, I'm sure he must have felt that it was an interrogation room, because I, I didn't like some of the comments that were made, but he stood fast and took it on and tried to give the best of, of what the police services are doing in this city. And they are doing the best. And as was mentioned by one speaker, yes, we're looking at adding six police officers, not just for this crisis, just for the safety and security of the city. Because that was told to me at that July 19th meeting, is people, residents, don't feel safe. We need more beats, more cops on the beat, boots on the ground. So David, and Laurel, it's, it's, this is a short-term plan. We, we need long-term plans. This, this site is the land use. Again, I want to protect myself because I'm sure it may go to Iraq. It's CDA, comprehensive development area. Anything they want to do, they have to ask for a variance. And again, going back to the meeting that the deputy mayor and I, and I believe, or CAO was there, we made it quite clear to government, put in an application to rezone. Rezone it, and then that covers the, the future of what we, what we have to do with this issue. So David, I, again, and Sean and Aaron, I, I'm, I'm having difficulty with, with, you know, the consolidation. And just as Patrick said, I, I met some of my friends of my son in Toronto. Regent Park, anyone that knows about Regent Park, was a public, public house development in Toronto. Well, it evolved into many other, other issues. And then they tried, government tried to consolidate some of the services. It didn't work. And now Sean and Aaron may have different information, but I just think that this, yes, as, as Counselor Beck said, this is going on to council. I'm voting to forward this on to council, have the debate, discuss it. But you go back to March 8th, when that promise was made from the floor, it took the, the heat off the issue at the time. Everybody felt happy. It was going, there was no, no, no OPS going. But here we are, we're back at it. And Sean, Aaron, I, I, as, as, as a member of this council and a resident of this city, I'm looking for something midterm, long-term, not short-term. So David, I don't know what you want to add to that, but I am pushing this on to council. I have some issues about it. And one issue that was mentioned by one of the speakers about Mount Herbert. Yeah, my brother was in the house when they moved Mount Herbert from the Eric Founne Center. And the Eric Founne Center was an alcoholic, it was an addictions foundation on McGill Avenue. It was accessible. People could walk there, families could drive their, their, their loved ones there. And I remember driving there with our family. So when it moved, it wasn't a good move. So think, if you think of moving it somewhere outside of, of, of the Charlottetown area is going to solve the problem? No. But we have to find, again, going back to Patrick, something that addresses this issue. It has to be addressed, but is this the right site? Because it's a variance, and it's a short-term solution. Thank you, David.
Just a couple of quick comments. Condition number six on page two of 11 of Laurel's report. I think, I think, yeah, page two of 11, and it's condition number six of her recommendation. And condition number six says, any future planning and development applications by the province for the subject property shall be fully compliant with requirements set out in Section 3.5A, Eastern Gateway Waterfront of the City of Charlottetown Official Plan. And let me just stop there. If you, if you go and look at that, those provisions, they're extremely rigorous. Like, in order to satisfy those provisions, you have to have a lot of technical studies, a lot of input, a lot of public consultation. It's, it's a big deal. And then the second part of it is, in Section 44, Comprehensive Development Area Zone, under the CDA zone, which is what this property is in, all the province is seeking at this point is a temporary use of one year of that property, okay? But what, if, if the province decided that that was going to be the permanent site, then they've got to come in with a concept development plan, which would be, you know, have whatever components to it that the province decided to apply for. And that, that is, again, a rigorous process, separate and apart from the Gateway Official Plan requirements. And as she, the last sentence of Section, Condition Number Six, an extension of the temporary use, major variance approval shall be prohibited. In other words, the province has to get it, I don't mean it's in a bad way, get its act together, get its environmental study completed, get whatever other studies Sean and Aaron need to complete in order to either decide this is going to be a permanent site, or it's not suitable for environmental reasons, or it's not suitable for social reasons, or health reasons, or some other, and we're going to go with some other site. That can all be decided. But this site, if that condition is adopted by council, that's, that's the end of it. It gets, they've got one more year of breathing space, which starts, I think, on October the 13th, which is only a month away. And after that, it's either make it work, or it's got to go somewhere else.
Just, just a quick follow-up, Madam Chair. So in our official plan, Laura, we do have harmonious development, correct? So my issue is this development, as we heard from some of the presenters, is this harmonious to what we are proposing to do with this site? That's a question I have, and I'm concerned about that, because I don't think the consolidation services like this are harmonious with what we want to see for the long term. And the other issue is that we have a plan, and I talked about it earlier, from the previous government, provincial government, and now this government, about the development, this construction of a mental health acute care campus. $160 million development with all the, all the staged treatment in place, which could include many of the services that we're talking about. That is my long-term. That's, that's the long-term. That's where we should be focused. I, I'm, this, I'm, like Counselor Beck, this is going on to council, but I think there, there will be difficulty trying to get everyone's head around the OPS as a good fit for what we're talking about that is not harmonious.
Just, I think everyone, everyone would agree, Your Worship, that a long-term plan, a medium-term plan, a long-term plan is ideal, is necessary, and is needed. I don't think it's a no-brainer. But in the meantime, you've got this application in front of you for something temporary, because the, the campus you just spoke of is not, it's not existent yet. Where it'll be in a year's time, we'll, we'll see. So, you know, again, I just caution that the focus is on an application for a temporary use for one year, and staff are recommending it be approved with certain pretty stringent conditions, especially Condition Number Six that I just referred to.
Well, just to, Madam Chair, this, the last point, we have been discussing this since February 8th. That was the first meeting. It was a public forum, March 8th, July 19th, September 5th, and now tonight, this is September 13th. So it's, it's not like that we didn't have time to deal with it, and I, I just think that, let's move on and get it into council.
Okay, thank you, Your Worship. So if nobody, oh, you have your light on?
Oh, there it is. Sorry to prolong the discussion, folks, but just in relation to recommendation number six and all of the things that have to happen if this application comes back for a permanent location, is that, is the onus not on the city to make all of these things happen? I know it's a lot of work, a lot of consultation with the community, but if we get an application asking for park site to become a permanent location, is it not going to be up to the city to make all these processes happen in a, in a timely fashion?
So through the chair, the onus is on the province to apply, to amend those plans. So they would have to put an application in to amend the 500 lot, or the Eastern Gateway Plan, sorry. And they would have to put in an application for an official plan amendment, and then the comprehensive development plan amendment. Staff cannot act on that, those applications unless they are received. So it is, it's not the city's process to push forward on that piece of property. It's the developer's process, and developer being the province. So if we receive an application, then we will deal with it. Until that time, it's a temporary variance for this use.
Thank you. And Laurel, what usually is an average timeline for the three, those three things that you just outlined? If you were to give an applicant advice, would you say it's a six-month process, an eight-month process, three months?
Yes, Madam Chair. You're probably, with the complexity of this, you were probably looking at, I'm going to guess, six to eight months, because you could do your official plan amendment and your, your, your comprehensive development plan amendment in one application combined. combined simultaneously. But the Eastern Gateway Master Plan would require additional consultation, because it is a master plan, and there is an expected outcome for that property based on that master plan.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you. One more question? No? Yeah, from Sin. Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And, and thank you so much, Laurel, for pointing that out, because, you know, the timeframe is very important, you know, eight to 12 months, somewhere between, because, you know, if, the whole consultation process. This permits adds, let's say, assuming this permit is allowed, 12 months later, I'm sure the consultation process for a permanent would not start, an application would not come in tomorrow, or day after, or this month. So, we are really looking at another application 12 months later on temporary, extension of this temporary permit, right?
So, through the chair, I cannot project that. I don't know where the province are in their current planning, their stages of planning. I mean, we would work to address an application if it come in immediately, but I think before those first pieces of the Eastern Gateway Plan is amended and the official plan amended, is amended, province also has to do community engagement on what is the best location for these sites. So, I mean, that is, is kind of the issue, there's multiple issues in play right now, and it is very complex. And that's going to have to be something that, you know, they're going to have to work with the city and federal government, health providers, to come up with that solution. And then they would apply for, they would apply for an application on that land, if that was the, the best location to locate that use.
Thank you, Laurel.
After their consultation.
Thank you, Laurel. And I, and I totally understand, I'm just, you know, their timelines for some reason doesn't match, and that's why I think it is, and if I can, you know, put it out straight and advise, you know, the applicants, whoever the applicant, you know, to actually focus on the aspect that you are looking to, like, the land use, and not focus, because I'm not making decisions on the social side of the things, or the health side, because that's not the mandate of this committee. We only look at the land use aspect. So, when you put your application forward and you're making a presentation, please keep it to, you know, it would be, really help us to make good decisions if you focus on the aspect that we have the mandate to decide on. Or...
Madam Chair, just on that point, but there is a social responsibility that we have as a board, and then how we recommend it to Council. So, I think that these issues that come up, for example, what Counselor Beck asked, and I think Sean, if you don't mind me asking, you will check the drugs being used and administered? So, will you be able to identify, and this is for Sean, Oxycontin, is it dilated, Percocet or Fentanyl, or illegal drugs such as heroin, cocaine, LSD? Will you be able to give answers to that, those drugs?
It won't matter.
Okay, okay. So, are we, again, going back to the presentation that took place in July 19th, this is a question for Sean, can I ask this? Will it be eight to four, or will it be eight to eight, the operation of the facility?
I believe in the report it said eight to four, and Saturdays and Sundays, 12 to five, correct? If I'm wrong?
Yeah, I know it's in the report, I just want to verify that on the public record, that's why I'm asking. Sean?
The initial hours of operation are, per the What We Heard report, and it's, the hours, opening hours, Monday to Friday, were adjusted, so to align with the closing hours, so to speak, of the emergency shelter. And it's so important to note that the initial hours of operation, which can be expanded pending client needs and pending the operator's ability to staff up, those initial hours of operation are a 100% improvement on the status quo. Right now, there is no OPS. And so, the initial hours of operation are, as per the OPS report, and 100% more opportunities to reduce public substance use and connect people to services. Thank you.
Point of clarification, so again, eight to four, eight to eight. Sean?
Thank you, Mayor Brown. So, as per the What We Heard report, Monday to Friday, eight to four, Saturday, Sunday, 12 to 5 p.m. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, or can we now, we have three options. We can either accept staff's recommendation and move that on to Council, we can reject staff's recommendation and still move it on to Council, or we can defer. So, those are our three options, and I'll need a motion from the floor.
Quiet in the Western Front. I'm moving to, moving this on to Council to accept, so that we can have a full discussion at Council. So, I'm going with option number one, as a recommendation from this Planning Board.
So, you're accepting staff's recommendation?
Moving the staff recommendation up to Council for a full discussion.
Is there a second ear for that? Jackie, okay. All those in favor of accepting staff's recommendation, oh, question first.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair, and I do understand the social aspect, and they are important. And yes, for, under Municipal Government Act, there is a duty to look at the health and safety of residents on municipalities. But sometimes, you know, when I am looking at applications over any board, or even the Council is looking at applications, they really need to look at what is permissible under their jurisdiction, and really about, you know, really about, and it would really help if the applicants, you know, put forward those aspects, you know, clarify on those aspects, and really not get it to, and this is, again, the board is, I'm not an elected member of this board, I'm a resident member, and my job is not to look into the political side of the things, but really look into the, you know, what is, you know, from a sound planning principles and what is mandated to this board. And with this, I absolutely, rest, and thank you so much, Madam Chair, for giving me that opportunity. Thank you.
Just to clarify, the motion is to move it on to Council with the recommendation from planning. So, it will be debated, discussed, and decided by a vote at Council.
I agree. Thank you so much, Your Worship, and I agree on that recommendations.
This will move on to Council, based on the committee supporting staff's recommendation. To accept staff's recommendation, yep.
No, again, it's a recommendation of staff going on to Council, where it will be fully debated, discussed, and finally decided by Council.
But the Council will still make the final decision.
But your recommendation, my thing is, you think, that this site go forward, that's what your recommendation is, and it passes by.
It has to go to Council to be, it still goes to Council, reject it or accept it.
So, why, so you accept it? Why accept it? You don't have to take staff's recommendation?
Going on to Council.
This whole evening is a waste of time. How can you say it wasn't built?
Okay, I guess I just need a motion to adjourn. Yep. All those in favor, moved by Counselor McCabe, seconded by Counselor Beck. Thank you.